We'll begin with the consent agenda.
All right, and just as a reminder to the mayor and council and audience members, we are live streaming the meeting, audio, no video, so what you say may be picked up on the microphones. That's your warning. We'll go over the consent agenda, but I would like to add two items under the commencement, what we would normally have called recognitions. So I'd like to add item four, which is a recognition of Ted Hall, and then item five, a recognition of Zeta Stowe-Harrison. She's a former Belmont resident who's turning 100 years old this month. So I'll now go over the consent agenda, but when we go that, I would like to add those two items after the Pledge of Allegiance. The first item on the consent agenda is the adoption of the city council meeting minutes from the planning retreat in January 25th and 26th. The second item on the consent agenda is adoption of your regular meeting minutes from your February 4th meeting. Item three on the consent agenda, something that we've done for several years in a row, and it is a proclamation recognizing Saturday, April the 6th, 2019, as Arbor Day in Belmont. That's one of our requirements for maintaining our Tree City USA status. Item four is something we also do frequently. It is an ordinance to close part of South Main Street between Airline Street and Myrtle/McLeod Streets on April 27th for the Geribaldi Festival. That's part of the NC DOT process. Item five on the consent agenda is a follow-up from a request from Vince Hill and Delta Sanders from Elements of Empowerment last month to provide $5,000 from the city to Elements of Empowerment for them to put on our Juneteenth celebration. That also includes some in-kind services and promotion from the city, and in exchange they will manage that event for us. Item six on the consent agenda is something that we've done since 2013, and that is participation in the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission's Urban Archery Program. In the past, we've had Reflection Point, McLean, and the Botanical Garden participating. Applications for the 2020 Urban Archery Season are due April the 1st, and we've received requests from McLean and the Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden to participate. Reflection Point does not want to participate in the upcoming, the next year's event. Item seven is another item that we do periodically, and it is a request to list six vehicles from the Public Works Department as surplus vehicles, and then authorization for us to dispose of those in our normal manner, which is on the govdeals.com online auction site. And those vehicles are pass their useful life for us, but somebody will buy them. Item eight on the consent agenda is the first step in an annexation request for contiguous voluntary annexation of the Garrison properties at the end of McLean Avenue, and you see the map of that on page 54 of your agenda packet. So this would be to accept the petition, your action tonight would be to accept their petition for voluntary contiguous annexation and to authorize the city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of that petition. And then the next step would be next month, the clerk would report back on the sufficiency, and you would set the date of the public hearing, which would be held at the following meeting, which would be May the 6th, 2019. Item nine on the consent agenda comes to us as a request from the Belmont Tourism Development Authority. Stephanie, who is the director, was the director of sales at the Hampton Inn, is no longer the director of sales at the Hampton Inn, and Anne Stroop is her replacement. And so the tourism authority has requested the city council appoint Ms. Stroop to fill the rest of Stephanie's unexpired term, which expires in 2020. And statutorily, we have to have a third of our membership of that board coming from industries that collect the occupancy tax, so this would keep us compliant with that legislation. So those are all the items I have on the consent agenda, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have two questions about number eight, and it may just be that I've not read enough to tell exactly. That does have access to Wilkerson Boulevard with the existing property that's already in the city, is that correct?
That is correct. It's got access on both McLean Street and Wilkerson Boulevard.
Okay. The other thing is, I know at one point we were talking about the Abbey Creek Greenway, that property was adjacent to it. Do we need to get them to go ahead and give us an easement as part of what we're looking at here, or where does that play into, or is that a piece of what we need to do?
So this request is just for the annexation of the piece that's in our ETG. They will be coming forth with a development plan.
Okay.
I believe through a conditional zoning.
Okay. Because I want to make sure we do that.
Yes, ma'am, and staff has been working with them on the Abbey Creek Greenway.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Adrian, just to follow up on our conversation, I'd asked you about the Elements of Empowerment, if you were able to get a rough number on what it was costing the city in in-kind services.
So we partnered with Elements of Empowerment for the past two years for the Juneteenth event, and in 2018, we provided approximately $812 in in-kind staff support, hourly rate of the staff from both the Parks and Rec and Public Works staff, and then approximately $150 in value from three of the city's lighting towers that we provided. So approximately $962 for that event last year. Any other questions on the consent agenda items?
All right. That concludes our council work session. I think we have enough time to get the sign-up sheets.
Clerk, get the sign-up sheets, then you can open the regular meeting, yes?
Public comment, okay. Two, okay. Someone signed up for item three. Pretty good, okay. Got a motion to call a meeting to order, anybody?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're down in session, all right. Going to ask Jim Heffron to do the invocation and Buck Alton to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed on us and for the good fortune of living in a city such as Belmont. We pray that you bestow your grace and wisdom on the mayor and members of the city council and all those with business for the council tonight. Amen.
(Inaudible) of United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice.
We have a very special presentation to make tonight. Not everybody gets one of these either, Ted. Ted was presented to Montross Chamber Annual Meeting, Order of the Longleaf Pond, and we felt it fitting that we were giving an award today, too, the key to the city of Belmont. Let me read a little bit about the thread. On February 14th, at the Montross Chamber Annual Meeting, Chamber President Ted Hall was presented with prestigious order, honor, and award of the Order of the Longleaf Pond. This is an award creation in 1963, and has been presented to honored persons who have a proven record of service in the state of North Carolina or some other special achievement, and to others as a gesture of goodwill. Of all the honors and awards, the governor of North Carolina can be so, none is more valued than the Order of the Longleaf Pond. I'd be proud of it, Ted. Others notable Order of the Longleaf Pond recipients are Billy Graham, Andy Griffith, We would like to recognize Ted tonight and congratulate him on receiving the prestigious honorary award. And not that we needed the governor of North Carolina to bestow the most valued honor in North Carolina upon Ted before giving him a key to the city, but we felt this was a good opportunity to recognize him for his many accomplishments and to thank him for everything he has done and continues to do to Belmont and Gessens County. Ted, congratulations. Kind of filled it up, won't we? Numbers wouldn't want to, but we got it built up. How many members do we have now?
Over 500.
Over 500 members. That deserves a big hand right there. There's a thousand of people that deserve this award to help the chamber this time, including the city of Belmont, very much so. Thank you, Ted. That's much, and thank you. Next thing we have is a proclamation recognizing March 17th, 2019, as Zeta Stowe-Harrison Day in the city of Belmont. Any family members from Zeta Stowe-Harrison family?
Zip. Zip is a family member.
Zip is?
Zip is a family member.
You show you gotta be a member. All right, we're going to make this presentation. Whereas on March 17th, 1919, Zeta Waleen Lucinda Stowe was born through her parents, Robert and Mary Greer-Stowe, at their home in Belmont, North Carolina. And whereas Zeta is named after Zeta Rankin-Stowe, the wife of the late James Jim W. Stowe of Belmont, dedicated herself to making the unique name of Zeta stand for what is good, loving, and honorable to all who know her, often stating her mantra, "A good name is rather to be chosen than great riches, and loving favor rather than silver or gold." Whereas Zeta lived in Belmont until 1946, when she was an active member of the Mount Pleasant Missionary Baptist Church, and graduated from Reed High School in 1936. And whereas Zeta raised seven children with her late husband Albert Arthur Harrison in Williamson, West Virginia, but visited Belmont with her children every summer to help care for her parents and help with their family farm. Whereas at the age of 56, Zeta earned her Associate's Degree in Early Townhood Intuition at age 56, Southern West Virginia Community and Technical College. And in 2010 and 16, she was awarded by the college the Believe and Achieve Success Award, and in 2016, she was awarded the Distinguished Mountaineer Award by former West Virginia Governor Earl Ray Tomlin for her achievements, acknowledgements, and her outstanding contributions throughout her lifetime. Whereas Zeta is now the matriarch of the Stowe family, many who still reside in Belmont have helped her to develop a strong foundation of family values, inspired them to take pride in their family heritage, and taught them that love is the bond that keeps the family together. Whereas on March 17th, 2019, Zeta will celebrate her 100th birthday, fifth past, at her home in West Virginia. She continues to smile with joy at the mention of Belmont. And whereas this 4th day of March, we honor Zeta Stowe-Harrison for her dedication to her family and the betterment of her communities by sharing love and encouragement with everyone she meets. Now, there are prior mayor of the city of Belmont, North Carolina, who hereby proclaim March 17th, 2019, as Zeta Stowe-Harrison Day in the city of Belmont. And with this ceremony, on the 4th day of March of 19, 2019. All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion, we have a preemptive in our agenda.
I'll second it. Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That will lead us into our normal meeting. Public comment is first, and I have several folks signed up to speak for public comment. When you come up, state your name, you have three minutes to speak, and your address as well, and then you can talk about the subject matter. So Luann Blankenship is the first one I think that we have signed up to speak.
My name's Luann Blankenship, and I'm the president of the Stowe Manor Neighborhood Association. I'm here in regard to our proposal for modification of our tree plan, and I'm really asking for approval, which I think is going to be given tonight based on recommendations from the planning board that we, meeting that we attended last week, but we also are asking for some financial assistance. We're a small neighborhood, and this project is going to be very expensive for us. We only have 38 homeowners. Just to trim these street trees this year, we had to go up on the homeowners' dues $100. It's going to cost us $4,200. We, as an association, this is the first time we've taken on this task. To remove the trees in the plan, we're looking at about $12,000. And other, for us to do it financially, it's going to take us several years to do, and the arborists that have looked at the trees, the longer we leave them there, the more expensive it's going to be to remove. It's not just a matter of taking the trees down, we have to have the stumps ground, and a few places we plan to replant, but we're going to have to move the location because you have to wait four to five years before you can replant. And we're willing to take the obligation of replanting, but we would like some assistance from the city, if at all possible, with removing the trees. Since the plan was kind of flawed to begin with, these large maturing trees should have never been designed for this small type lot. We only have a 10-foot setback in the front and zero setbacks on the sides, and that's kind of how we ended up with the problem with these trees being too large for the location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the public comment, we have Matt and Lori Tortrich. You got three minutes to speak, state your name and address. How you guys doing? A long time no see, right?
Very good, that's right, a couple days, Carl.
Hi, my name is Lori Torterton. This is my husband, Matt, and our address is 4055 River Falls Drive in Lowell. We went to Belmont Abbey College, and today we live in Lowell with our six, soon-to-be seven, children. Matt and I were raised in Catholic pro-life families, and we were blessed to be taught the truth about abortion, and fortunately never had to go down a regrettable road to understand that life begins at conception. After we got married and found out we were pregnant, we celebrated the life of our child right away. The life I carried inside of me was a cause of great joy. From then on, our children were always included in celebrating our pregnancies with us. When we found out we were expecting our fifth child, we were all very excited. We began to make plans for our new baby. We picked out names we liked and included the baby in our family prayers. Sadly, when I went to the OB at 12 weeks, the midwife was unable to find a heartbeat. Unfortunately, Matt, unfortunately, the baby had died. When we had to come home to tell the kids the news, the room was filled with tears as we all realized that a life had been lost. The experience made the fact that I carried a life within me more real. Being pro-life is not just a checkbox on a political party's platform or something a politician claims to be. It's a real child and a child that deserves to live.
Our first concern is for women. The current rhetoric employed by the pro-abortion side of this debate is that they are pro-woman. In reality, this is at best confusion and at worst a lie. What we know from speaking with counselors, psychologists, and spiritual leaders is that abortion causes pain, and like any wound, healing is required. But that healing can only take place when we are convicted for what abortion is and are accountable for the harm it causes. When we can face that head-on, we can recognize that we are hurting and turn towards those leaders in our community that can help with that healing. For those that continue to insist that abortion is nothing more than a woman's right to her own body, they by extension refuse to allow a post-aborted woman to identify the wound in her life and get the help she needs. Far from being pro-woman, they are pro their side, and whatever damage results in the process, so be it. We cannot let these women in so much pain stand by and not bring them the mercy and compassion and healing they need. The second motivation are the extreme actions taken by some of the more so-called progressive states in the country. The legislation enacted in New York a few weeks ago is one such example. The good news is that we are winning this war. By and large, the youth of our country today are seeing abortion for what it is and trending more and more in pro-life direction. This gives us hope. At the same time, the pro-abortion proponents will not go down without finding a fierce battle, which is what they're doing now. With such extreme positions as abortion up to the due date, we cannot be bullied. We must fight harder now and not take our eye off the goal, protection of every child and every woman. For us to believe that something as extreme as what was passed in New York will not make its way to North Carolina would be naive. It is for these reasons that we make an appeal to the citizens of North Carolina, Gaston County, and Belmont in particular, to support all efforts at promoting the pro-life cause. Thank you for allowing us to share our personal experience and convictions with you all today.
You hit that three minutes right on the nose. We practiced a lot of this before, huh? Thank you. Yeah. Lori, Matt, my wife and I also love to talk.
Thank you very much. Thanks for sharing, Carl.
You bet. Next to speak on the public comment is Linda Mooney. How you doing? You got three minutes and state your name and address.
My name is Linda Mooney. I live at 2 Old Fox Trail in Clover, South Carolina. I thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm a volunteer with Life Chain of Gaston County, and we had asked Lori and Matt to speak about their pro-life story leading up to my remarks. The Life Chain is a national pro-life prayer and witness event held on community sidewalks. It began nationally in 1987 and came to Gaston County first in 1993. Typically, it's held for one hour on one Sunday, the first Sunday in October. Last year, on October, in October of 2018, 1,500 Life Chains were formed in the United States and Canada, including in Belmont, Mount Holly, and Gastonia. In response to some of the recent advances in abortion laws in our country, people from this area asked us to host a Life Chain in the spring, and I'm delighted to report that we will do so on Sunday, April the 7th, with the full support of national Life Chain and local pro-life groups. The first purpose of Life Chain is for Christians to come together, to pray publicly for babies in the womb, parents who are in crisis pregnancies, our community, our elected officials, abortion workers, abortion advocates, and for those emotionally wounded by having been involved in abortion. Secondly, participants hold signs that are meant to inspire passersby to think about what abortion really is. When abortion, when people really consider what it is, and when they see and hear about the real effects of abortion, many change their minds. Abortion has succeeded, in my opinion, in this country because it has been shrouded in darkness, it has been clad in some false language that makes it sound like something positive, and many of us have said, "It's not my job to care for my brother, right? I'm not my brother's keeper." We must counteract that. Spring Life Chain in Gaston County will be held on Sunday, April the 7th, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at five locations, including two in Belmont, one on the front lawn of Belmont Abbey College, and the other one in East Belmont on the sidewalks of Catawba Street from 3rd to 6th Street. We use only nationally-approved signs, which are provided in the parking lots or along the route. The signs have pro-life messages on the front and prayers and hymns on the back. No sign-up is needed to participate. One can simply show up at one of the locations, but if you would like to get your church or group involved, please contact us. More information is available at lifchainegaston.com and on Facebook at Life Chain Gaston. Life Chain is a silent, peaceful, prayerful witnessing to the sanctity of human life in the womb. Citizens of Belmont and the surrounding area are urged to participate on April the 7th.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. That concludes our public comment. Next item on the agenda is considered the adoption of a resolution approving MDP 2019.01 Whirl's River Road, a request to develop a 209-lot single-family residential neighborhood on 87 and 1/2 acres located on New Hope and Whirl's River Road. Shelley?
Thank you, Mayor. Major Council. As read into the record, this is Major Development Plan 2019.01. I want to take a moment before I present the request to talk about the process itself. The applicant is going through the process titled the Major Development Plan Process. Now, this is used for major subdivisions that are proposed within the city that can develop by right. So the process is intended to allow input from the planning board, the community, and the decision-makers on a proposed development that, again, is allowed by right based on the zoning, but allows a dialogue to occur between the developer and the community. So that brings us to the meeting here tonight. This is a proposed 209-lot residential subdivision on 87 and 1/2 acres. Parcel IB number is 193219. This is proposed for single-family residential lots. The community that's proposed includes open space, tree-save areas, greenways, and required infrastructure. The map and photo on the screen provides location information. So the map on the lower right, the subject property is located north of Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden. The aerial photograph on the left shows the condition of the property. So the subject property, as you can see, is undeveloped. It is wooded with a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees. It does have some waterfront area. Whirl's River Road actually runs from east to west, and at the very end, near the waterfront area, there are two existing single-family residential lots. These property owners and lots are within the unincorporated area of the county. Other uses around the area, to the north, there is, directly north, is actually a farm. It is undeveloped use for farming. To the east, you have single-family residential lots, including the community of Woodland Bay. Again, to the south, you have the Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden. So the request is to develop a residential subdivision within the suburban residential zone. This residential zoning district allows a maximum density of three dwelling units to the acre. The subject development is proposed at just under 2.4 units to the acre. They are proposing a building type of detached homes, which is an allowed building type within that zoning district. There are various land development performance standards that have to be met for the building type, and in that zone, they include minimum lot width, setbacks, front, back, rear, and sides, and setbacks for a front-loading parking pad. The development meets or exceeds these performance standards as shown on the table on the screen as well as in your packet. So in your packet and here on the screen, you'll see the overall layout of the proposed community. It will take access from South New Hope Road. It's proposed with a network of roadways. The primary access road is proposed to be a 60-foot-wide right-of-way that will run from east to west, ending at the cul-de-sac where the two existing properties are located, so it will allow continued access to these existing lots. As you can see, there is a really good roadway network within the development. There are open space areas, trails, an amenity center, and part of the Carolina Thread Trail is actually proposed through this development as well. So I'll go over some specifics on the design. Per the city's land development code, the development is required to have a 25% tree-save area that equates to just over 21 and 1/2 acres of tree-save area, which is met in this plan. In addition to that, our code requires that street trees be planted throughout the community and yard trees, both front and back, as part of this development. and yard trees, both front and back, as part of this development. The open space requirement for this development per the ordinance is eight, almost nine acres, 8.73 acres. The amount of acres of open space actually provided is over 18 acres of open space. This includes a waterfront park of 4.37 acres, various pocket parks, and an amenity center. There is also a network of greenway trails planned through the open space area of this community, and there's a segment of the trail is actually identified as part of the Carolina Thread Trail, which will connect to the existing trail that goes around the Botanical Garden. And this would allow a connection at the Botanical Garden through this development to the north boundary. The street design, again, we worked, we worked over the design of the street layout. We wanted to ensure there was a good network of roadways for emergency services. Again, it's a mix of 60-foot right-of-ways and 50-foot rightaways. The 60-foot right-of-way would allow parking on both sides of the street. The 50-foot right-of-way would allow parking on one side of the street. All of the roadway sections do include curved gutters, sidewalk, a landscaped area with street trees and streetlights. And again, we are ensuring that access will be maintained to the existing homes at the end of Whirls River Road currently. So utility. All major subdivisions within the city are required to connect to city services. The city engineers indicated that the existing infrastructure, sewer infrastructure on the peninsula, that there's no available capacity. He is currently conducting a study to prevent, to the state, on actual usage with, based on the city, or excuse me, the state's position and outcome of that discussion, it will assist the city in determining any current availability within the system and then identify required upgrades to the infrastructure. Now, with all developments, the developer is responsible for providing the appropriate studies to the satisfaction of the city's engineer to determine the development can be served by city services. So I'll go over one of the conditions, or several of the conditions that have been placed on this proposed development. So with all of our developments, we do evaluate it against our traffic impact study ordinance. It did meet the threshold of trips associated with the development, and so the city did conduct, hire our consultant to conduct the study, and I'll turn it over to Steve Lightley to provide the report.
Good evening.
How's it going?
Good. Yes, we prepared the traffic impact study for the development. It met your ordinance requirements to warrant the traffic study. It did not meet NCDOT's requirement. The traffic generation was too low for that. However, NCDOT did participate in the scoping and review with a mitigation on the final improvements recommended. So got a quick slideshow here to go over the highlights of the project. So there were four intersections that were evaluated on South New Hope. One was at Union New Hope. The second was at Lake Wiley. The third was at the site driveways of Whirls River. And then the third was at Lower Armstrong. From a background level of traffic generation, there were two approved, or two, two projects that were included in the study. One was McLean, so the remainder of the McLean development, which is shown in the green. And then the purple area up to the north on Lake Wiley was the Riverside development. Okay? So that traffic, the way that site was proposed at that time, the traffic's included in this study, along with its improvements, and we'll talk about those in a minute. And then in addition to that are the TIP improvements recommended by NCDOT to widen South New Hope Road. So for 209 single-family homes, trip generation would be 157 trips in the AM peak hour and 209 in the PM peak hour. So morning and evening traffic numbers. So on this stick figure, we've got two different graphics. One on the left is essentially representing the background lineage. So that is the lanes that would be on the road without this development. Okay? So, and it's a little difficult to tell the difference between the black and the blue, but what you would have on the left side would be those improvements that would either be built by the two proposed developments, and in this area, McLean had no improvements required. Riverside had the two signals that are showing up there. And as you know, Riverside's not progressing at this point, so those signals are now off the table from, from their perspective. In addition to that, though, are improvements that NCDOT would, will be installing for their widening of South New Hope Road. And that widening starts about 500 feet south of Union New Hope Road. And it's essentially creating a four-lane road that goes all the way up to Tidman. So it'll tie into the existing four-lane section that's up there. On the right side is the graphic in red that represents the identified mitigation by this site, the Whirls Riverside, to mitigate their traffic in accordance with your ordinance. So if we just start at the top and work south again, the recommended improvements were a 225-foot right-turn lane that's on Union New Hope to turn onto South New Hope Road. There were no improvements at Lake Wiley. At the Whirls River Road site, recommended two exiting lanes, so separating the left and the right. And then for the inbound lanes would be a right-turn lane and a left-turn lane on South New Hope Road. The capacity warranted a little less than the 100-foot-long storage lane, but NCDOT recommended that they build 100 feet for each of those storages. And then at the final intersection is the roundabout, and essentially, that's going to result into an additional southbound lane, so that there are two lanes entering the roundabout, just like on the westbound approach today. And we'll look at a graphic in a minute, but it's not, it's not modifying the circular aspect of the intersection, but just the entry. So again, on the graphic, Union New Hope Road, the red arrow's representing the right-turn lane at 225 foot long. At the main driveway, add to the existing single lane coming out, mark it as a left, add a right, and then add a right and a left on South New Hope. And then at the roundabout, the red arrow southbound is essentially intending to represent what the westbound side of the roundabout looks like today. So two lanes would come in, one would make the left and circulate, circulate around to get to Armstrong, and the other two has the ability to continue south. And that's all I have for presentation, but happy to answer any questions.
Were you doing the road improvements? What are they performing at right now? I mean, because there are road improvements required, are they A, B, C, D?
Level of service?
Yeah, level of service.
Take a look. So which, which intersection?
Any of them that are, that are getting improved. I'm assuming they're being improved because they're, we're trying to bring them back to even.
Yeah, yeah. So at South New Hope and Union New Hope, it's failing for the outbound movements. Okay? That's, that's why in these other projects, they needed to put in a signal. But with the Riverside development, it generated enough traffic for both of those roads, Lake Wiley and Union New Hope, that it needed a traffic signal to process the turn lanes coming, or to process the traffic coming out from the side. The through movement is flowing because it's not interrupted by anything today, so it's an A. But the, the traffic that's trying to get out on South New Hope is just delayed too Lake Wiley, that's a B, and that's mainly because it's right-turn lanes. Okay? So it's in the contrary to the Union New Hope. And then same thing coming back, Bs and As for the through movements and the left turn into the site in the PM peak. At Whirls River, in the AM peak is a B getting out in the morning and an A in the morning because there's only two, essentially two residents. And then the through movement is A because there's no delay at the intersection today. With the site, the outbound movement drops to an F. Just too much traffic of the, I'll show you here with a trip gen. So the AM peak hour out is 118. So for it to come out and make the left turn lane, it's just too much traffic, so it's, it's failing. But it's still measurable. Okay? So it's about a minute, little over a minute on average per car to get out for that outbound is about what it is. So it's a delay. It's a, it's a definitely a peak hour delay to, to get out on the South New Hope.
Shelley, this might be a question more towards you, but I don't know if you guys track or chart this, but how many more peop, kids, let's say, are they gonna, gonna be put in our schools? We got any idea? I mean, I know that's kind of abstract, but...
No, we don't.
There's no way, there's no way to...
Yeah, we're still...
Get an idea? Okay.
And then for the roundabout, the southbound movement is the one where the recommendations are made. It drops to an F with the site traffic, but improves to a B when that second lane is added. So overall, it goes in the background, so without the site, but the future traffic is at a C. It drops to a D with the site and then comes back. Actually, that southbound lane improves it even better than the background, so it becomes a D, level of service.
So we're at a C.
Yep.
Gonna drop to a D.
Drop to a D.
And then after the improvements, go back, go up to a B.
Correct. That's the PM peak.
So the, the whole design of this is not to gain any ground, it's just not to lose any ground?
Right. In this case, you know, with adding that lane, it just gets a better improvement than just pulling it back to mitigate the traffic. So, you know.
And it's gonna be less traffic signals?
Nope. No, no signals.
No.
No. Those signals, those signals were a part of the Riverside development, and like I said, it's not progressing. And we talked to NCDOT. Their, their project stops north of Lake Wiley Road, so they don't get to the Lake Wiley Road intersection.
Yeah.
They are working at the Union New Hope Road. They're, they're still in the evaluation phase of that, so they haven't determined yet. But they said probably no signal, but because of the volumes coming out and the delay, maybe super-street-type accommodations or other ways of solving that to address the congestion and safety issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but it's still an evaluation. That's not a decision by any means.
Okay. So it's not final, not instant stop?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And he's with Kimberly Horn, by the way.
Yes. So to continue on with the presentation, I'm going to speak to the proposed architecture with the renderings that are provided in your packet. The conceptual elevations propose a mix of materials consisting of brickstone, fiber, cement siding, and vinyl material would only be used as trim on the proposed homes in that community. And looking at the concept elevations, they, they do meet the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 4.2.2. This item went to the planning board on the, at their February 21st public meeting. There were various, there was a good discussion. We had very good input from the community. The existing residents were there, representative from the Carolina Thread Trail, as well as representative from the Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden. Based on all the feedback and discussion, there were additional conditions added to this request, which received a unanimous recommendation to the council to approve as conditioned. I'd like to take a moment to read the 13 conditions into the record. The first is the proposed development shall be in compliance with the Required Land Development Code. Two, street infrastructure improvement shall include curved gutter, landscaped area of street trees, streetlights, internal and external to the site. The applicant developer is responsible for construction of the transportation improvements as identified by the TIA pursuant to approval by NCDOT. Safe, adequate, and constant egress and ingress shall be maintained for the existing residents located at the end of Whirls River Road. Their tax ID numbers are included in this condition during development of the new community. Five, the applicant shall comply with all requirements necessary to connect to the municipal utility water and sewer system to service the project, including the installation of lines or system improvements and acquisition or dedication of any required easements. Sewer capacity is not available at this time. City staff is conducting a study in order to consult with the state on available capacity. Based on the state's position, the applicant may be required to upgrade, upgrade existing pump stations and other infrastructure in order to obtain capacity to serve. The developer shall enter into an agreement with regard to water and sewer extensions. Six, the sanitary soup pumps, excuse me, the sanitary sewer pump station located within the development will be located within a structure in accordance with the land development standards. The adjacent property owners were concerned about noise associated with operations of a pump station, so that was added. Seven, the detached home shall be constructed in compliance with the architectural renderings provided in the project package. Eight, the proposed development shall include open space and tree-save areas in compliance with the Land Development Code. Nine, greenways within the development shall include a segment of the Carolina Thread Trail. The applicant shall continue discussion with the Catawba Land Conservancy regarding the exact location and design of the Carolina Thread Trail. Sinage prohibiting on-street parking past the last house adjacent to the trail at the throat of the cul-de-sac shall be provided. This was a request of the existing residents. They were concerned about people wanting to use the Carolina Thread Trail, parking in the cul-de-sac and blocking their access to their homes, so that was added.
Yeah.
Ten, screening shall be provided adjacent to the Carolina Thread Trail to buffer adjacent residence, residential lots at cul-de-sac crossings. Screening may be a mix of fencing, landscaping, or natural buffer. That was also a condition added based on testimony at the last, comments at the last meeting. Eleven, declarations governing the HOA will stipulate that any common open space abutting the Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden, other parcels to the north, and they are listed by tax number, will be inspected by the HOA as to enforce no trespassing from the community onto the Daniel Stowe Botanical Garden, other parcel via the common open space. That was a request by the gardens and agreed to by the developer. Twelve, said development shall be capped at 209 residential lots, and the last one's a schematic plan approval is valid for a period of 24 months. So based on this presentation, we ask that you receive the trans, transmitt of support for this project as condition, and there's an attached resolution outlining all of the conditions just read into the record. I'm probably glad to answer any questions you may have.
Shelley, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
As far as cul-de-sac goes, is there gonna be an area where people can pull into the Thread Trail close to, close enough to the park?
No, it was not, it was not envisioned that this would be a trailhead like at Seven Oaks where there's a big parking lot. This is just, the trail goes through the community, and it's really intended for their greenway system to meet up and be an extension. But that road is proposed as a 60-foot right-of-way, which would allow parking... But that road is proposed as a 60-foot right-of-way, which would allow parking on both sides until you get to the bulb of the cul-de-sac. So the residents, adjacent, existing residents were concerned that people will pull in the neighborhood and park there to access the trail.
I can understand. Okay. Thank you.
So if it's a by right development, is that the case?
Yes, yes, sir.
Why all the conditions, I guess?
Again, some of it was based off discussions from the community, the planning board. They've showed us some rendering, so we want to make sure that it's conditioned, that we get what was shown, generic condition of complying with the Land Development Code. Just a reminder of our expectations and what was presented.
So Shelley, any development that's Chapter 15, it's more than eight units, goes through this process where we have the opportunity to have a discussion with the developer and the community to enhance the development of the project? Is that how it goes?
Absolutely. So the conditions are, you can look at it as enhancements, as you put into the record, enhancements based on concerns voiced by the community. And of course, we always hear about traffic. It's good to the community know that we are doing traffic studies and they are proposing to mitigate their impacts as it relates to traffic.
Quite a variety of home designs.
Yes, there is, yes.
We have several folks signed up to speak.
Before we do public input, we did have a, so the planning board had a discussion about the enclosure on the pump station. We just wanted to give you sort of another side of that. So that was from the planning board's side, and Jerry's got some concerns, just as a utility operation and maintenance.
Thank you.
Hi, Jerry.
As you're aware, we have our Land Development Standards Manual, which councils approve the provisions in there. And in that document, there are two kinds of pump station. There's a neighborhood pump station, which this would be. Tends to be the smaller pump stations that we have around town, a couple hundred gallons per minute. And then there's a specification for a regional pump station, which requires a building. And there are only two regional pump stations now, Morgan's Branch and South Shore Regional Pump Station. I predict that there will be two more, one for the Pittinger property and one for the Henry's Chapel property. But those are the only ones, and they are defined as being pump stations that are repumping from several other pump stations that go to them. Either of those standards, the pumps are outside of the building, they're in a wet well, which is buried in the ground. The pumps are submersible pumps, so they are always underwater. And then as the water level rises, they pump it back down, but they are always underwater. So virtually, you can't hear pumps from anyplace. We have grinding equipment before it reaches the wet well to take care of those solids that come in from adult paper products and things like that, so that they don't mess up our pumps. That also is underground. Also outside the buildings, and we can't put that in the building because of sewer gases and things like that, that would be, could be an explosive situation. Also outside the building is our chemical feed equipment and tanks. You'll notice that, that all the pump stations down at the end of the peninsula there, they're the big blue tanks. Again, we don't put that in the building. The only thing that would go in the building then would be motor controls, which is a little bit awkward because your pumps are out in the pit in the back. If you're flipping the switch on the motor control, you don't know whether you're turning on a pump or not unless you walk outside and look at it. And then the other thing would be the generator, and I know the generator was the primary concern. On the two regional pump stations that we have, there are two big holes in the side of the building. One is an intake and one is an exhale for the cooling of the generator system. Those have aluminum louvers on that open up when the generator comes on. The exhaling one is blown out by a fan, and the generator is noisy, it goes right out those holes. In practice, our staff operates the pump, the generators once a month to make sure that the power transfer switch and automatic starts and everything is working right. And they do that generally late morning, after 10 o'clock or so, and before maybe 2 or 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So they do it in the middle of the day when everybody's, do that. In practice, on the two buildings that we have, they will open the garage door to those buildings while they're running the generators, so they're not, they're not keeping the sound in per se. What we're proposing here is, number one, staff doesn't want another building they have to maintain, they have to roof, they have to paint, they have to worry about air conditioners, lights, and all this equipment. So what we are proposing is that we will get a generator with a sound attenuating enclosure. They call them residential soundproofing on the thing, and we'll put that in. The generators are only run once a month, maybe for an hour, if that long. Otherwise, they only come on in an emergency. If there's a power outage, I think quite frankly, people have other concerns than whether there's a noise because they hear a generator. They'll be able to flush their toilets, for instance, without power that they wouldn't be able to do. So that's our recommendation. I've gone over this with our public work staff, they're in agreement. They don't want additional maintenance responsibilities. You can get these generators, and it might be a little more expensive than what we have at some of the other ones, but we have 23 pump stations, two of them are in buildings, are in building. And of the rest of them, 21, there are 19 that I've been involved with in the last 30 years, and none of them have enclosures for the generators. So that's how we propose to do this. It makes it more convenient for our people to work on the, on generators and the pumps and everything else, because they can get crane trucks in and a whole bit, and reduces maintenance, so they don't have to worry about roofs. So it's our recommendation that that condition be struck from the list.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hatton?
And that area will already be screened and landscaped through the site plan, so if it's an aesthetic issue, that'll be covered by the screenings like we do other...
It'll look good, yeah. Okay. All right. Okay, we got several folks signed up to speak. Now I have Matt and Chase, you're representing applicants?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah? Okay. All right, and I have Lynette DiNperio signed up to speak, right there, okay? Adele Hester, Ed Byers, and David DiNperio. Okay, so first one wants to come forward?
We typically allow the applicant to speak and then the public to speak, and then there can be some...
All right, we'll let the applicants speak first, then, okay. That sounds good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Chase Curley. I live at 6535 Sharon Hills Road, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28210. I want to thank Shelley and Jerry, Kimberly Horn, D O T, Stowe Botanical, Carolina Thread Trail, and Adrian, as far as a lot of anticipation is planned. It took a lot of work, and we think that, you know, you asked a question as far as why did we, if it's by right, why do we allow these conditions? Really, what we think is a lot of these have come out, you know, we have residents that, because we're also, we are the landowner, we are the developer, and we're the builder, and they kind of have parallel interests. We want to have privacy, we want to have, make sure there's no parking in the cul-de-sac. We want the pump station to be quiet, because, you know, we're going to have folks that live closer to that than, you know, some of the existing neighborhood residents now. But, so we're, you know, we're appreciative of that feedback, and we think it was a good process. So I think we have a great plan that will be good with not only our residents, but also within the town, the shore, and the area. I found myself in the same position as the planning board last time, where, you know, have very little else to add with Shelley's very thorough and detailed report. But I appreciate your time and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Just if there's any questions.
Good, real good. Okay. All right, the first one signed up to speak is Lynette DiNperio. How you doing?
I'm Lynette DiNperio, and I live at 549 Lake Wiley Road in Belmont. As many of you know, my husband and I have lived in and worked in the Belmont area for, going on 40 years now. And as longtime residents who are deeply concerned about our community, we're here to express our opposition to further development on South New Hope Road at this time. The city of Belmont is reaching an extremely critical point in its development, and we're asking that the council and the planning board make plans that will enhance the lives of all of our citizens and maintain the quality of life that we currently enjoy in our community. I know that you're already aware that there are issues with traffic, especially on the eastern side of the county where development is the heaviest. We would request that the issue of roads be addressed before we add hundreds of more cars onto our roads, especially in particular, South New Hope Road. Our schools are at maximum capacity and can't handle the continuing influx of families moving into this area. Developers have already clear-cut huge areas of land along South New Hope Road and have built numerous new subdivisions. That's not only means more growth than our roads and infrastructure can handle, it also means the loss of green spaces, forests, and wildlife, all of which make this area desirable and what attracts families to Belmont and enhances the quality of our lives here. Loss of forests and wild areas is causing runoff and is polluting our waterways, which have also been one of the major attractions of this area. We see mud washing into the South Fork where minimal silt fences are being breached by the rains that we've had. So we're asking each of you, and I've been a part of the Protecting South New Hope Community Group, that you represent all of the citizens of Belmont who live, recreate, and work here by not approving the site plan for the project until we have the infrastructure to support it. We are relying on you, our elected officials, to make sure that we maintain the quality of life we currently enjoy through controlled growth with planned infrastructure. We appreciate you standing up for all the citizens of Belmont and for protecting the resources that make it a desirable place to live. Thank you for your time and your service to Belmont.
Thank you, Lynette, I appreciate that. Next we have signed up, Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
I couldn't quite read your first name, so...
Sonia.
Sonia, okay. Can I guess?
Yes, hi. My name is Sonia Tremblay. I live at 537 Lake Wiley Road in Belmont. So a lot has been said by Lynette already, so I'll come to only a couple of points that I want to add. I've lived in Belmont for more than 15 years. Prior to that, I lived in Charlotte. I first moved to Charlotte 23 years ago from Canada. I was amazed by the amount of trees we had in Charlotte. I had never seen a city like this. I came from a big city where you see all concrete, and this was very appealing to me. What Charlotte looks like now, I am afraid Belmont and Gaston County is becoming that. We don't see it yet, but it's going to be that in 20 years. It's been 23 years since I first moved to Charlotte, and I see that every small green spots I work there, my husband works there, has been taken by building townhomes built on slopes around the highways. Are we going to do that? Is that what we want to be? We have a beautiful waterway that attracts a lot of people. I'm an environmental engineer, and I've been for over 20 years. Regulations as they are now in our country, they're better than, let's say, Canada, but they are not strict enough. And when people are left to build numerous developments like we have right now, we are left with imperious areas. We always think of runoffs as what we see when they build it. But what we don't think about is what's left after. You know, by adding the minimum amount of trees, now you have parking lots, driveways into homes, you have roofs, all of that add to the runoffs. I live on Lake Wiley Road. We can barely get our boat out anymore, except right now because there's a lot of water. What is it going to be next? You know? I mean, this place, Belmont, I call my home. I was really impressed with what we did after this being a textile mill, you know, community. You guys were able to make it different and appealing again with all those jobs that went outside. It's not going to be appealing. The young people, they're looking for better quality of life for their children. They're different from our generation, and I am really concerned about that. Furthermore, schools are at maximum capacities. I was looking at numbers, 91%, 93% in middle school and elementary school around Belmont and Cramerton. We're talking about 100%, 93% high schools. I agree with Lynette. We need to at least first construct those roads and see where we're going. And I think we need a very well-designed plan. Thank you.
Next we have Adele Hester.
My name is Adele Hester. I reside at 100 Moonlight Way in Belmont. I've resident of 30 years in the Paradise Point community. And I am the founding member of the Protecting South New Hope Community Organization. Mr., I'm sorry, Mayor and Councilman, the Protecting South New Hope Community Organization, consisting of 13 committee members, Facebook page with a current membership of 612, and Twitter hashtag #HopeForNewHope, was formed to make the public aware of the proposed developments going on in the Belmont-Cramerton area. This allowed us to hear from the public and to be a voice for the people. This is the critical part, we are a voice for the people. We have heard from lots of people, and we are organized. We have organized and held public meetings via the Paradise Point Community Watch Meeting on October 30th, and a public meeting at the New Hope Fire Department on November 19th, as well as informing the public and encouraging them to attend the MT Land Public Meeting at Gaston Christian Church on November 27th, at which time there was a big turnout and heavy opposition to that development. So as you can see, we have been organized and we are a voice for the people. Though the, through these processes, the public has voiced their concerns and made it clear that they are opposed to the dense developments currently going on and proposed in the area. The density of these projects is detrimental to the current way of life that everyone loves about Belmont and Cramerton. Many have moved here for these reasons. We understand growth is inevitable, but we want to see smart growth that enhances our neighborhoods and towns. The density of these are too high. The roads, schools, and public services cannot handle this type of growth. There would be access, there would be access issues to service these types of neighborhoods because of parking on the streets, et cetera. This is a safety concern for these neighborhoods and the residents. The roads in Belmont are overcrowded to the extreme already. Gaston County recently denied MT Land rezoning requests for the reasons which were voiced at the meeting on January 27th, 2019. We presented three petitions supporting these positions. We have attended Cramerton Commissioner meetings and planning meetings. They are currently proposed to amend thereby right to one home per 40,000 square foot. We ask that Belmont follow that lead and amend as well to cut down on these dangers of overgrowth and crowding. We ask that you consider lessening the density of this project by fielding homes and land and future developers. And I might add that the traffic study, and this should be a major concern for y'all because we hear a lot from the public on this, the two traffic lights, the one at Main Street and down in South Point Road, and the traffic light down there at the Stowe Manor, all of the convergence of all this traffic converges on them two stoplights, which this doesn't address, which is a major concern for the public. As well as it doesn't include the 612 home development going in on South New Hope Road up by the racetrack road. And we all know that, I don't know the percentage numbers, but I'm going to say 80% of the people that live around here commute to Charlotte, and they all converge on them two stoplights. And it's a very major concern. Tracy Philbeck expressed his concern about it, because he lives around here at the council meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Next we have signed up Ed Byers.
My name's Ed Byers. I live at 266 Walles River Road. I'm one of the two homes at the bottom of the upcoming development. My neighbor was not able to be here tonight, but I've been talking with the fielding, the folks. We've been talking some things out, trying to get some things kind of arranged to, I guess, help everybody. We moved into that area fifteen, sixteen years ago, something like that. Not naive enough to know or think that it was, nothing was ever going to happen to the We're great with development. We're great with thread trails. My wife and I, my neighbors, we're all outdoors people. I said that at the planning meeting a couple of weeks ago. What I have problems with, and I'll give you an example of what happened to me since the planning meeting. I'm in my yard, and I've got people, I don't have any idea who they are, leaning on my fence, coming from the thread trail, which it says down there to stop and turn around or take another trail, there's branches off of it. Standing, and this happens all the time, standing there wanting me to give them direction on how to get out. Well, I moved in the woods to kind of be alone. I'm not a hermit, and I'm not, I don't dislike people, don't get me wrong. I'm just kind of a country guy. And so, later that day, I was going out of my driveway, which now they're, they're road, but there's people walking up and down the road lost. Today, nowadays, you don't know who is who, so you kind of got to be on guard. Well, that's a concern I have. Well, based on that, we have had the pictures up here on, and it's not in stone exactly as I've been told. But the way, it's all I got to go on. That's what I said last, last time I was here. It's all I got to go on. That cul-de-sac, that thread trail, and them last two houses are on top of me. They are on top of me. I don't know where the thread trail is going to go across, if they're going to cross the cul-de-sac or what, but if the cul-de-sac is put in where it's based now, I guess they're going to cul-de-sack my land. I own some of that property. Not a lot of it, but I own some of it. Now, the man that ran the, I can't remember his name, the planning board, brought up a little statement that I loved when I heard it. We've been there for fifteen, sixteen years, and he mentioned that maybe ought to have a little thought into this as to these people were here before you were. I'm not trying to stop anything dead in its tracks, but I also don't want to be staring at a side of a house a couple of feet outside my fence. I'd like to know where this is all going to be, and I hope, and we've talked about it, I can maybe have them come out and just point as to what's going on here. Give me an idea. But I'm basically asking the city council to help me have a little cushion on that thread trail and at least them last two houses. You're going to put two-hundred-and-nine houses. He actually brought up two-hundred-and-seven. This is where I'm at. They're going to make all kinds of money off this. Two houses isn't going to be a big deal. Give a man a little bit of space, place to turn his boat and his pontoon boat around down there, and, and get along. I mean, just make it nice so we can have some comfort, too. We were there a long time before then. I'd like to see that happen, is what I'd like to do. I guess it's, we have another couple of things about some dead trees down there that I'd like to get with, with them and talk to them about and so on. It's not, not a big issue, but I just wanted my voice to be heard and known as to where I am down there. My neighbor feels the same way, but he's not here to tell you right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Last signed up to speak, Dave DiPerio.
Thank you, Charlie. My name's David DiPerio. I live at 549 Lake Wiley Road with my wife Lynette. Been there since 1996, and been living under the threat of the garden parkway coming through our property. Now, that's off the GIS, and now we're talking about the Catawba River Clock Crossing, which I understand the need for that, and, and the way things are going right now, I'd almost approve that they come through and take my house and build it because the traffic is so horrendous. Used to take me five minutes to get from my house at the end of Lake Wiley Road to my office on Wilkinson Boulevard, and now it takes about thirty-five minutes. And that's only if someone will let me out when I go to take a right-hand turn. All the traffic from South Carolina coming up. Neighbor's four or five houses down is building a house. All that silt is running into the creek. You can see it with all this rain that we've had. The silt fence they have up is not being monitored, so I don't know who's taking care of that. Coming up the road, I look at Timberlake, and I look at what they've done to that neighborhood there, and they've clear-cut and they've sheer-faced the wall behind those people. And if I was, if those people, I'd be here at this meeting huffing mad about, boy, that thing has been developed, and I don't know who's responsible for allowing that to take place, but if I lived there, you'd be hearing from me. So, I don't know how, I think we need controlled growth. I know it's coming. We do need traffic. I think we need to put the lights in before any growth is approved, and I think the traffic needs to be dealt with before any of this development, empty land. They're going to clear-cut that whole acreage across, eight-hundred, nine-hundred acres across from my house, and they're going to put in high-density in there at will, or at, by right. And so, all, all the deer, all the turkey, all the wildlife that's there now is going to be roadkill, and it's going to be, I mean, these, wildlife has to go somewhere. I think the council needs to get a hold of development. Across from my office, all the apartment buildings that are building there, I don't know where all these people are coming from. I know they're coming from somewhere because they're coming into my practice. In that respect, it's good for my business, but I hate to see what it's doing for Belmont. We've got to get control of the growth, and we've got to do it in an environmentally safe and friendly way. And it's about quality of life, and that's what Belmont is really all about. So, in your, in your consideration of all these developments, and not only these folks that are coming here, and they have a good right to develop their property, but let's do it in a, in a sensible way that makes sense for everybody. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Any other comments?
Can I ask Shelley a question? Shelley, in the negotiations, and this is by right, and unless I'm crazy, we haven't had a by right in a while. Seems like everything's been coming conditional. What are the enforcement capacity on a by right? Even though you've, you've made these negotiations, in the traffic study, I heard, heard a term about the storage lane that DOT recommends. When somebody makes a recommendation, it's just that. I don't know that there's any enforcement behind that. It's just, we would prefer to see this than this. What are the enforcement standards for the city between by right and conditional? I mean, we have, conditional, we have locked into an agreement, and there's really no wiggle room. When it's conditional, what are we, what are we dealing with?
It's by right?
By right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. There's still a condition that complies with their land development code. It's still, they are required, by right, this, there are conditions that they have agreed to that can be enforced through a LDC. For example, the TIA ordinance, although we have a condition saying you will build these improvements, you know, as approved by NC DOT because they're partners, it's their roads as well. The ordinance itself, the land development code says, for development, you are to do these improvements. So, that's all coordinated to, with the various agencies. So, what happens after, if the project moves forward and is approved, then they have to do construction plans, and that is where we get out the conditions of approval, we get the land development code, everything that's agreed to. We coordinate with NC DOT to make sure they've gotten their approval on the roadway design with NC DOT as we're reviewing the construction plans. They have to provide any required study as it relates to stormwater management, sewer water capacity, and it has to be to the satisfaction of the appropriate agency, whether it's our engineer or Gaston County, the phase two community, they handle some of the erosion control. So, there is follow-up, there is compliance. Then we have inspectors, why the development's going on, that makes sure that they're moving along as they should be. There are as-builts required by the city as far as the infrastructure. The city doesn't accept streets until they are built properly. They would be limited to the number of homes. We make sure they comply with the architecture. So, it's, whether it's by right or conditional, they have to meet the required, the requirements of the land development code. And then these are agreements, a lot of the conditions here are agreements on top of that to enhance the community. I hope that answers.
Thank you, Shelley. So, Shelley, this is already permitted under the current zoning, and I know, I think in the last two years, we've cut the density in half on the peninsula from six to three homes per acre, and this is at two and a half, correct?
Right. This, this one happened to be an annexation, if you recall, within the last year, year and a half. It was an annexation, and on the peninsula as a whole, yes, we limited the overall maximum density of three dwellings to the acres. This came in with the suburban residential zone that's maxed out at three. So, yes, it complies with the direction the city is going.
And then we've incorporated this traffic impact analysis to try and come up with a solution for some of the, the traffic. And so, this process is about adding conditions. So, my question is, on the traffic impact analysis, are we able to enforce that the traffic improvements, the road improvements occur before construction begins? That's the first question. And then the second question, the gentleman whose house buds up with the cul-de-sac, if that was a deal breaker for us, what condition could we put on to offer him a more buffer? Or, from, from staff's opinion, if that's something we want to make happen, what's the best way to address that?
Well, I'll tackle the last question related to the buffer. Based on zoning and whether it's a two-hundred-and-nine development, or someone came in, they decided they're going to build one home, they can technically build a home adjacent to the existing homes. They own the property, it could be one home. They, so what they've tried to do in this plan is provide a somewhat of a buffer. You can see the cul-de-sac and the two lots. I don't know if I can move this up there. There's a way to do it.
You did it. You did it.
Oh, did I? Yeah. Don't have my glasses on. So, there's some, there's a buffer. You can see the, the part where there's two homes together at the end of the cul-de-sac in the lower left, and there's tree save area. And I can ask the applicant if they could estimate what the gap is between the, the trail or the closest lot to the existing, but they didn't build right up on their property line. And that was a, a point of concern at the planning board meeting. He asked, the property owner asked, can they build right next to me? And we had to say, yes, technically, they could.
But we could approve a plan that doesn't show that technically?
Well, it has to be agreed to, to answer your question. It has to be agreed to by the developer. Okay, this is by right.
So, that's a question for the developer?
So, that's a question for the developer. They would have to agree to that because it's not a condition in our ordinance.
To tag on with regard to this, the thread trail, I was probably the biggest Greenway proponent in the group here with all the history I have, but to think you're going to have two-hundred-and-nine houses and it not be a trailhead and not have parking there, that is a concern to me. So, I'm hoping that we will look, or you guys will look at that as you make the plan to make sure that there is some parking of some type because it's, it's a concern.
Right. And that's a great point. The community itself, what they were saying is it's not a trailhead for the general public. You know, they have every intention that their own community can catch multiple trails through their community to get to the thread trail. They have sidewalk throughout their community to get to the Greenway Trails. There's the right-of-way all the way to the end of the cul-de-sac is actually a sixty-foot right-of-way, so it could allow parking on both sides. So, the concern was, they want some privacy. Their, the future residents and the developers voice their concern. Well, they don't want to make it a big trailhead with the general public is coming into the community as well and using it as a trailhead. You know, they want it to be used by the, the residents in there. So, I'm not sure we could ask the developer if they would want to provide an extra parking, but it's not that far from the amenity center. There's on-street parking. I think it's adequate to serve the community to get access to the thread trail.
All right, so maybe when you look at the amenity center, then there could be enough parking to crack some of that.
Correct. Yeah, the amenity center is the purple right up the street there. And you can see trails from that area linking. But with regard to the timing of transportation improvements, I'm going to look to our experts here to help answer that.
Okay, so just make sure I understand the question. It was related to the timing of the improvements, and I think it was actually related to beginning construction on-site, correct?
Yeah, so instead of building the homes and then fixing the roads, can we fix the roads and then build the homes?
Right. So, during the driveway permit process, both the city and the state will sign off on that, and they'll ensure that the conditions are met. And from the city's perspective, it's issuance of a CO, not a, not a work, start construction topic. And generally, NC DOT does the same thing. They'll allow a temporary driveway permit, they'll come in and start construction at site, build infrastructure, get utilities put in, grading, et cetera. But before they will allow homeowners to start moving in, the roadway improvements need to be built and operable.
Okay. So, that's the standard?
It's other than the construction traffic, yes.
Any other questions?
I have a question for the developer, if you want to address my question or concern.
Do you question the distance that we provided already, or whether or not we'd be willing to?
Yeah, well...
Give up lots for the sake of additional buffer that we have, or that we've already provided?
Yes.
No, I don't think we would because we're already providing a hundred-foot buffer, and we've agreed to plant landscaping to provide that, you know, to either further shelter that. And we agreed to a few other conditions, I think, that I think more than adequately saw that. You know, the fact that we're, you know, for, we're two and a half, three years before that would ever get built. What's to say he would not move before then, and then we've just committed that for something that he wasn't aware of when he moved in? I think we have, you know, the hundred-foot buffer we provided now is, I think is very, very wide. And again, providing the landscaping to provide the privacy is, is, I think, very adequate.
Any other things else?
We'd be willing to give, you know, some distance up, but I think it'd be, as long as we are not asked to disreduce the lot.
So, as long as you keep the lots, you can increase the distance?
Correct.
How far? Gina?
Sixty feet. That's a lot.
And you'd agree to that condition?
No.
What does Shelley think about that?
I think that's a nice concession. And it's achievable based on their design. They could pick up lots, the, any lots lost at the end of the cul-de-sac there could be made up and based on lot widths that they're proposed.
Okay.
That they're proposed, yes.
Any more discussion? Motion to approve the development with the enclosed conditions.
One question on the condition number six about the sanitary sewer pump station. We had the recommendation from the planning board to have the pump station in the enclosed structure, and then you've got the utility staff's recommendation not to do that. So, if we could have clarification on, on how you want to go with, with those two sort of competing recommendations.
Based on experience that I've had with pump stations in our neighborhood, there's a, there is a minimal amount of noise, and I think it's appropriate. It sounds like most of the whole setup would be outside anyway, so it doesn't seem reasonable to think you need to enclose anything. So, I would propose we don't enclose.
And instead have that. What did you call it, Jerry? The generator?
It's a residential grade.
Do we need to have the motion restated?
Well, just if you want to make a motion... Well, just if you want to make a motion to approve the resolution, or adopting the resolution approving this, just make that change to item, to condition number six.
Number six.
So that it does not have to be located with any structure, it would just be, uh, built with a residential generator.
Do we also need to include, include about the 60-foot buffer that they've agreed to as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion.
Um, I make a motion we approve, um, with the addition of the number six, uh, change with regard to the generator and also add the 60-foot buffer that the developer has agreed to, to, uh, help the situation.
Okay, you have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. No one opposed? More opposed? All right. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Thank you all for being here, too. Appreciate you being here. Consider the approval of the street modification on Stowe Manor Street, request to modify the approved planting plan for Stowe Manor based on recommendation of Arborist and Gasson County Director of Extension Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of our community. Tonight passed before you Major Development Plan 2019.02, which is a request to amend the approved tree planting plan for the Stowe Manor neighborhood. The Stowe Manor neighborhood is located adjacent to the north of Keener Boulevard, just east of South Central Avenue behind the Stowe Manor estate home. This neighborhood was approved under a different set of regulations. So I want to talk to you a little bit about how we got here tonight with this request. The neighborhood has come to staff with some problems that they were having as it applies to the requirements that were in place at the time the neighborhood was approved. So this is a set of land development standards that's no longer in place. As we looked at the request, we realized that a variance was not feasible path forward because this does not apply to one's specific property, it's not property-specific, it regards applica- uh, application of requirements throughout. So actually, our regulations are pretty silent on this type of amendment. But since it does require approval and to neighborhood-wide standards, we determined that an amendment to the major development plan was the best path forward. It allows that community conversation, allows the request to be vetted at Planning and Zoning Board, and allows you as City Council to make the ultimate final decision. So as I said, the Neighborhood Association has been struggling with the problem, and they have prepared a request and submitted it to staff. And we found that the subdivision was originally approved in 2001, the streets were built, trees were planted, and then there was changes to the developer, and that changed hands, and there's changes to the product types. So single-family homes were built where maybe apartments or condos had been planned on different size lots. So the result is homes that were built in close proximity to large growing street trees. So we received this thorough request from the neighborhood. It includes a street tree map showing the trees that are planted in the closest proximity to the homes, where it lists out the distances here. And we received a comprehensive inventory of the trees in the neighborhood. So ultimately, the request is to remove the most problematic trees based on the professional tree care, professional opinion, and arborist opinions, and have some that are not replaced, okay? They're asking, however, to substitute the existing tree canopy that has voluntarily been planted on the street right-of-way, on private properties, and in the common open space throughout this little neighborhood. So you'll see in the staff report, we've completed an analysis, you know, based on the thorough inventory that the neighborhood has provided us. Again, per arborist and tree care professional recommendations, there are 17 total street trees that are proposed for removal without replacement. There's other trees that are proposed for removal, replacement of a smaller species, that's in the report, and that leaves 64 street trees to remain and be maintained by the Neighborhood Association. In addition, as you'll see also in your report, there's 191 additional trees that have been planted throughout this neighborhood. Staff has counted 147 of those towards canopy replacement as the remaining species are more like evergreen screening or buffering. So the result in that is that the total canopy before removal is approximately 51 percent, the total canopy after removal is 45 percent of this area. The resulting tree canopy is similar to today's standards as we have performed analysis on a couple of their different neighborhoods this year for other purposes. But the bottom line is that the resulting tree canopy is similar to what we get with today, today's standards. So the Planning and Zoning Board did hear their, this request at the February 21st meeting, and the Neighborhood Association and members of the public have given their feedback, and the Planning Board recommends unanimously to approve as presented. Now, as Ms. Louieam stated earlier in the public comment portion of this meeting, there's an additional request for financial assistance that is part of their submittal. So tonight, we're asking you to receive the report and public comment, consider that request for financial assistance, and ultimately, you're considering, if supported, to approve the resolution that is attached. So as is presented, there is no financial consideration, but Council is free to modify the resolution as you see fit, but we're asking you to receive the comment and consider the, the request.
Let me ask you, what was the number? How much were they asking for in financial assistance?
I don't think that there was.
Twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve thousand dollars.
Yes.
Who, who, who was the developer on this property?
Multiple.
Yeah, there was, I've seen different.
Here, I was, uh, same story with the original developer, he planted the mayras. The second developer was Doug Eamon, um, he planted the, um, 64 willows. And then the third developer was D.L. Horton, and all they did was come in and replace trees with them.
Did we have any kind of tree ordinance at that time of development, or was that after the fact?
Oh, yes, yes. So part of the problem here is that the regulations were different, they required large growing trees closer together. That was one factor, and then just how everything transpired was another factor on how we got here today.
Well, let me ask the City Manager a question. They're asking for financial assistance, and that's not uncommon in that we provided, I think, I don't know if we can set up a similar manner, but Reflection Point in Glenmere when they wanted to add lighting. Is there an option to do something like that? I think it was assessed and then brought, paid back.
No, and, and those two instances, uh, they were requesting streetlights.
Yeah.
And we, uh, we basically fronted the money and they paid us back for that.
Why wouldn't that work in this situation?
I don't know that we have the authority to do an assessment based on tree removal. It's, it's specific in the statute.
It's specific, okay.
And they don't want to pay it back.
Mr. Manager, let me, let me ask you to clarify your recommendation of approval. What are you, what are you recommending for us to approve? Because I see in the staff report, the staff does not support the financial request, and I see in the, in the minute, in the, uh, agenda here that you're recommending approval. So just specifically, what are you?
Yes, sir. If you'll look at the resolution on page 110 of the packet, uh, staff and, including me, are recommending approval of the change to the plan to allow the neighborhoods to remove the required street trees, but not the financial support from the city.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions for Melissa? No. I do. All right. No one has signed up to speak on this item, so, uh, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll make a motion to approve without the financial commitment.
I'll second it.
You have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Nice try. That's, I'm with you.
You need to be consistent with sidewalks and trees. You maintain sidewalks but not trees. May be a problem there.
Okay.
He's a slippery slope.
Next item on the agenda is approval of professional services agreement for water main and sanitary forest main on Belmont Middle School property. That's the new Belmont Middle. Item number four.
Um, as, as you're aware, there is a junior high school being built in Belmont, and it was on property that connects South Point Road, uh, to the Pittnshire property. And from the master plan that I distributed at the retreat that's about 10 years old now, um, we show certain utility lines going through the school property to provide water and sewer service over to the Pittnshire property. Since they are under construction now, we felt this was the appropriate time to ask them, uh, if they would consider letting us put in pipes just far enough to get past the school building and the driveway so we don't have to tear that up after their incession another year or two. We asked their engineer, which is Alfred Menish Company, uh, to give us a proposal to design that work and do the permitting necessary for it. Since they already had surveys, knew the site, they knew what was going on, there were some changes that were going to be made to the entrance way anyway, and they gave us a proposal, and I'm asking for approval of that proposal. Once they get that done, we will negotiate with the school district's contractor who's on-site. It's already mobilized and hopefully saves some money there with the idea that they could put in the pipes least expensively for us. Uh, they have given me a budget figure of $440,000 to do that, but that's without plans and definite lengths to review. The improvements involve a 12-inch water main coming off of South Point Road and paralleling that driveway that goes into the school, and which will eventually be extended all the way over to Pittnshire property. In addition, it includes a 16-inch forest main, we have a 16-inch forest main down Stowe Road now. Uh, that forest main would be extended south on South Point Road on their property, probably under the sidewalk that they're proposing, and then it too will be extended with the water main in there. That'll provide the access point for sewer for the entire Pittnshire property. They will have a regional pump station there with probably four or five smaller pump stations because of all the coves and the topography of that property. So that'll give us the access that's necessary. Uh, if we don't do it now, uh, it'll be difficult to determine how we get through there. Uh, one way would be to cut open McKee Farm Road, go down that neighborhood and disrupt that neighborhood to get over and around the school property. So this, this is kind of the time to do it, um, and they seem to be willing to work with us on doing this. And there would be a certain advantage to the school district in that there are water service lines which are now designed to cough, come off of South Point Road. Uh, it's a four and an eight-inch line, one's a fire line, one's water use. They would be able to take off the line that would be designed here, and that'll shorten the length of their service line. So the, we're asking that you approve the engineer's proposal, which is $20,000, and then, uh, in addition to that, give us about a $5,000 buffer for permits. There's permit fees that they'd have to go through, through the states. And then field surveys, they said, if they needed additional surveys. So, uh, all in, we're looking at, I'm sorry, 27,000. Twenty-two plus five. I, I think this is very reasonable because they're already out there, they've already got lines drawn on paper, it's already in their CAD system, all they got to do is add a few lines here and there and do it. So I think they gave us a very reasonable price.
Couple of questions, Jerry.
Yeah.
By doing this, are we providing a cost savings to the school at all with what we're doing? Because you say it's going to.
There, there will be some negotiation of the, the price, the, the school contractor gave me that budget number just based on lengths of pipe and stuff, but we, we should be saving them a little bit of money, and certainly we'll be saving them a lot of hassle in the future. So we, we intend to negotiate with them and get the best deal we can.
The other question is, all right, if Pittnshire property does do what we think it's going to eventually, is any of that cost that we're incurring now, would that be part of what they would incur?
Um, yes. Right now, we would pay for that, but I anticipate when we, um, review and revise our system development fees that we would include the money we spent on that in the system development fees, so.
Okay, and that is something we can still do?
Yes.
Of course, that's not prohibited by.
Yes. When we adopted the system development fee ordinance, uh, one of the recommendations is that we review it often, at least every five years. So that'll be the time to pick that up.
Thank you, Jerry.
And the, and the school, by the way, did pay their system development fees.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Jerry? All right, do I have a motion to approve the agreement?
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion to approve, got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Moves us on to the next agenda item, which is the approval of a downtown facade enhancement grant for 106 North Main Street.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, the one incentive program that the Main Street program has is a facade enhancement grant, uh, program. We have not had an applicant to date, um, so far. We recently had an application submitted by Chad and Katie Hutchinson who own, uh, 106 North Main Street, uh, that occupies, uh, the Strain Bean and Johnny B's Pizza. And so they submitted, submitted a facade enhancement grant to, um, uh, replace the cloth awning over, uh, the front and the side entrance. Um, it's been there approximately 10 years, it's faded, it's tattered, torn. Um, they, they went through the proper procedures of submitting, um, that application with multiple, um, quotes. It was reviewed by the facade, um, reviewed by the design committee, um, then went, was presented to the, uh, the Main Street Board, um, which was approved. Uh, the full, the, the full cost of the project is $3,978.43. Chad and Katie are requesting $1,743 as a window-one match, uh, for, uh, for the project. Chad and Katie were not available, be here tonight, but Nate is here representing, uh, the project, and the Main Street Board recommended a full approval.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Um, one question. Would, would this not be considered routine maintenance rather than an enhancement? I mean, if it's weather torn, you know, sun baked, whatever, it would seem like that's, I mean, is that part of your criteria? Is, is it enhancement or maintenance or both?
Um, I, I, depending on, you know, how you want to look at it, it could be an enhancement. It's enhancing, uh, the facade and the look as, um, someone comes into the community. Um, and so this is an allowable, um, expense, uh, within the guidelines of the program to, um, put up new awnings or replace existing awnings.
I'll make a motion we approve it.
I second.
A motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion carries. Good luck with your awning. Consider the approval of a funding request from the Downtown Belmont Development Association for Friday Night Live and other special events. for Friday Night Live and other special events.
The city last year, as my understanding gave, asked the DBDA to take on bringing back the Friday Night Live concert series, and awarded the DBDA $15,000 to bring back the concerts. And so recently, the DBDA, the Main Street Board requested to increase that to 20,000. We have Danny, our board chair, who would like to speak.
Sorry, I'm not dressed for the evening. I was actually outside because the sun was out today. But I just want to give you a quick highlight. I joined, I'm the chair of the Main Street Advisory Board and the Downtown DBDA, and it started this year, I think the last time you saw my interview for the position, so I'm back. First, I just want to thank Phil and Angela and the committee members for being here and putting in countless hours. I think a lot of stuff, you don't see behind the scenes, it's almost like a part-time job for a lot of us, and we're all volunteers. So just wanted to touch base and a little highlight of what we did last year. It's not only Friday Night Live, I think that's a connotation we can get away from. It's the concert series, it's Party in the Park, it's Christmas Village, it's new lights for downtown, lighting up Main Street for fellow citizens, and we can't just think of it as a concert series. That's not what it is, that's not what we do. And the goal this year, we've got a work plan in place for the year, and just some highlights that we've worked on already this year, we started in January, was targeting businesses' recruitment, recruitment package to get people here and new businesses that we know are going to succeed, and that's one of our top priorities. We've got our economic vitality working on. How many empty buildings do we have? How much commercial square footage is not filled right now? And how do we get people and businesses we want to target the businesses we want to downtown Belmont? Another idea, one of our work plans is cluster promotions. How do we help merchants here? We have a Main Street that's thriving. How do we make it better? How do we get people coming from Charlotte and all over the place to come and spend their money at the end of the day at our merchants? And so we're working on cluster promotions, how we work with restaurants, how we work with everyone on Main Street to bring people downtown. Next one, develop communication plan. I think sometimes there's some confusion on what the Main Street Advisory Board is, what the DBDA is, and so we're really trying to streamline that. This is what we're here, this is what we're doing, this is how we're helping out the community, and that's through social media, that's through billboards, that's through radio, and just getting the name out. This is what we are, and this is what we do. And at the end of the day, the goal is to give back to the community. At the end of the day, the DBDA is a 501(c)(3), and it's not to sit here and plan events for the whole community. It's how do we give back? How do we further enhance the community? How do we do public art? How do we get other people to this town and give back to the community that, you know, put their time in? And finally, before we get into the think of it, was this committee, when I was appointed chair, was tasked with trading jobs, grow local businesses, improve citizen satisfaction, and increase tourism. And that's where this money's going. And those are the four key topics we're working on. That's where the money's going to go. And Phil's going to talk through some of the statistics about all the time and effort we've put in already and in the past. So with that, I hope we have your support and continued support for this great organization. So for that, Phil?
Thank you, Danny. We just, sorry, we did not get this sheet developed in time to include it in your pack-up, but we did want to highlight some of the numbers as far as the cost associated with running the events downtown. So Belmont City Council, you did approve $15,000 for the DBDA to sponsor, develop eight concerts, five Friday Night Live, three Party in the Park concert series, which the average cost per concert is $10,000. So total for those eight concerts, $80,000. And so the DBDA, they had to work hard to raise an extra $65,000 just to break even on these concerts. That's a big task for a group of volunteers to take on, trying to raise additional sponsorship monies, but also trying to work, put in the effort, selling beer and a lot of hours there to try to make up that difference to actually fund the concerts. So I think a number has been mentioned that on the Friday Night Live concert series, that the DBDA raised $19,000, approximately $19,000, and that's pretty accurate. But then during the three Party in the Park concert series, we actually lost $7,000. The DBDA then took on a bigger responsibility for the Belmont Christmas Village, more lights, more events, which was a big event, and we anticipated approximately 5,000 people. It was really a magical experience downtown. The DBDA spent approximately $17,000 out of their budget for Christmas Village, and they received, you know, no financial support for the city to do that. As Danny mentioned, the DBDA does so much more than put on concerts and hold events downtown. They give countless hours of their time with no compensation to promote downtown and its businesses. They work hard to design related matters to enhance the downtown. They travel to other communities on their own dime to evaluate things that are going on in those communities, to try to come back here and implement those items, and/or to try to recruit businesses. So approximately 3,144 hours of volunteer time was spent this past year by our group of dedicated volunteers. So North Carolina actually has a volunteer hour that they equate that to, and that's $23.41 per hour. So if we do the math on that, our volunteers are putting $73,601 back into the community through their volunteer efforts. So the cost of the concert series and the Christmas Village, right at $97,000. So the city contributed $15,000 cash and also in-kind services, and the DBDA contributed with their volunteer hours. And the money that they raised and they earned, they contributed over $155,000. And trying to compare that to some of our neighboring communities who also invest city money into the concert series, we have the numbers there, which we, or approximate figures that we receive from Bestinmer City, Mount Holly, and Gastonia, as far as the dollar amounts that they contribute annually for their downtown concerts. So in closing, the city did approach the DBDA to actually bring back these concerts into the downtown. I understand it was a stable for the community for the last 10 or 12 years. It brings a lot of people into Belmont. Some of our businesses may not reap the rewards that night, but they have informed us that the people, that their businesses get promoted. People come back that Saturday to visit their businesses. So we do get positive feedback from our merchants downtown. So the DBDA is simply asking the city to annually support the DBDA honorably and financially for putting forth the countless number of hours that they take on with the extreme risk of putting on these events. Thank you.
Adrian, what did we budget? $15,000. We did budget $15,000. Okay.
Adrian, is it not appropriate for traveling tourism to kick in a fairly large chunk of money toward this? Or does it seems to me that that would be appropriate? Is that or not?
The DBDA, I'm sorry, if I can jump in. So the DBDA does approach the Belmont Tourism Authority for sponsorship, and they have been one of the Friday Night Live sponsorships. They've contributed $3,000.
Yeah, but I'm asking for more than that. In other words, we've got a substantial, or did when I was on it, a substantial amount of money to work with. And to me, this is an appropriate way to do that. But the question is, is it appropriate to do that?
Yes, ma'am, it's appropriate. And as Phil said, the DBDA did do that last year in addition to what the city was providing. So to follow up on your question, Council, we budgeted $15,000 in this year's budget. So I would, if council wants to approve the funding, I'd recommend that we do $15,000 for the rest of the current fiscal year, then $5,000 in the new budget, which starts July 1st, which gets them into their fall season.
Adrian, how much did we give the Merchants Association when they were doing the concert series? I mean, we just gave them in-kind services. I don't think we gave them any cash.
Yeah, I was in the planning department and assistant manager at that time. My recollection, and certainly there are members from the Merchants Association here that probably have a sharper memory than me. I don't believe we gave them any direct cash. I believe it was in-kind services and then porta-johns.
So they were able to go ahead and put on the concert series through their own efforts? As I recollect, when this came back, we made a commitment for one year to support them. And after that, they were going to support this themselves through the beer and wine sales.
That's not accurate.
That's not accurate?
No.
Well, we had this conversation with Adrian one time. I thought we had made a commitment for three years. You corrected me and said, no, it was only one. So if we made the commitment for one, why are we back here again talking about this?
So when we had that conversation, you asked if this was the first, if last year was the first of several years' commitment? And I said, no, that it was, last year was a request for one-year funding, and that they may come back with future funding.
Adrian, do you support this recommendation?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve it based on the manager's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Is there any more discussion?
All opposed? Very good. Motion carries, then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of the approval of a downtown electronic informational kiosk.
One item that was budgeted in the CIP, was it a year or two ago? I'm not for sure.
This year.
This year, was some type of kiosk wayfinding signage in downtown. When I came on board approximately six months ago, this project was already in the works. And talk about volunteer hours. Angela is the chair of our design committee, and I would say probably since last October, conservatively, Angela's probably dedicated about 20 hours a week on this project. She is a true champion for downtown. So she was, so she's going to come up and do a presentation on the downtown kiosk. A lot of research went into the kiosk, and the more research that was done, the more the direction that we started going was electronic kiosk. And that does come with a heavier price tag, but there are so many rewards as a result. So I'll turn it over to Angela.
So that's a great introduction. I will not have to introduce myself. And what I wanted to start with first were a few initial thoughts that were referenced in early 2018, so that we talk about where it started last year, early 2018, when that capital improvement budget was established. And the point at which our committee began to talk to vendors, discover what is a kiosk? What do you do? What are the options? What are the possibilities? And then the rabbit hole. So here we are. So from those initial thoughts, we were, or it had been proposed, to do a traditional kiosk with static map signage and put those in numerous locations throughout the districts. And this was an extension of our wayfinding signs, and those would be for providing specific places within our downtown districts as motorists transition to pedestrians. So to help you better understand the background of thought behind how this has sort of evolved, to remind you, the Main Street Board, of which Danny's already discussed a lot of that today, so we look at economic, aesthetic, and cultural environment of Belmont. So three different aspects. So in looking at these kiosks, we felt that what, where we landed sort of addresses all three of those things. So what we are proposing is a digital kiosk versus a traditional kiosk. So that's a change. And with that digital kiosk, there are some things, reasons why we're suggesting that. First of all, digital kiosks are capable of infinite information expansion, and with a city like ours, when you're making an investment, you want to, we're growing fast, so we want to be able to address that growth. So digital kiosks allow us to better able to do that. Also, there are no limits on what entities we can include because there's no size constraint to a static map. So all of our businesses in the downtown districts can be represented, should they choose. Information is, can be customized on these screens, and with what we're proposing, there are aspects of it that are updatable by designated city staff, so we don't always have to go to an outside vendor. There will be times at which we will have to, but this proposal will allow us to better maintain this ourselves. And there are also opportunities to incorporate revenue support with a digital kiosk. And there are also opportunities to sort of prove that support to the people we're asking for. You know, ad money that has an ROI reporting for the number of clicks, so we can not only make the ask, but we can prove why it's beneficial. And just in general, societal technology is becoming an ever more accepted and comfortable place for people to turn to for information. I mean, think about it, when you want to know something, you look to technology these days. But to be clear, what we are proposing here is really not just a kiosk. We're proposing something that gives us certainly, yes, information, but it's also a form of promotion and in a way, a form of art. This is all rolled into one. So for the information side of it, it can give us a lot more information than a traditional map, as I said before. We're going to have a mapping and detail listing for all the entities with an office or a space in any of our three downtown districts. The digital kiosk will also allow us to increase that for key tourism-related sites outside of the districts as well. And there will also be opportunities for directional reference to key sites outside but near Belmont, such as the Charlotte Airport. So pretty much the things that would be important for people to know, they can find it. From the promotion aspect, with the playful design we're going to show you in a moment, we feel there'll be Instagram opportunities. There's also going to be an attract loop that will run in the beginning when no one's interacting with it, and there'll be branding and advertising opportunities from that. And then tourism and business-related promotion can be employed within certain categories and entity details of the kiosk, and that content is to be discussed later. And then there is also the opportunity for comprehensive event listing, and that can be done in a link that can be shared with the city or with Belmont Tourism. And I personally would love that. There's so much that happens that I miss, so this would be one place you can go that can be shared. And then finally, we feel it is a form of art. The, we're suggesting, Emily has been the brainchild to design an enclosure that we think elevates this. It's very fun, and it references Belmont's real history. So here is what we were envisioning. It's a caboose. So the front of it would have the digital screen, and the back of it would be the traditional, like a traditional poster holder for our events. Pretty cute, huh? So this is going to be, proposed to be 10 foot, 6 inches tall, and 3 feet wide. It would be designed to accommodate a wheelchair, and the touchscreen would be able to be, you could touch the screen to reconfigure it to be ADA compliant, so it checks all those buttons. So next question is, how would this kiosk actually function? So what we envision is that it would, as I mentioned before, have an attract loop, and this is just something that has a series of images that run whenever there's no one actually touching it. And on that attract loop, we felt that our suggestion would be that we run four or five pages with images that promote the city. So maybe it's a Belmont historic photo, a Belmont event feature for the season, a Belmont lifestyle active photo that shows people what living here's like, and maybe a Belmont Go! promotion. And then there would be one to two options, we're suggesting, for paid advertising, and that can help to maintain the kiosk, it can help to pay for the kiosk, you know, it's, we feel there would be lots of opportunities, lots of businesses that would be fine to advertise on here, that would actually support this. this and its image. So once you touch the screen, you would go to a menu page that would have the different categories. For what we were promoting in our budget, we would have about five menu options for that. But certainly, it could grow as we grow. So in those five categories, we were suggesting one for food and drink, one for retail, one for every non-retail business and organization within our district. And that would include government offices, the post office, all of those kinds of things. One for to-do and see. And that would be the area where we could reach out a little beyond our downtown, include Belmont Abbey, the Hay Theater, include all these events, the Stowe Botanical Garden. And then there would be another that we are going to go discuss, whether it's, if it's just a place where people want to just hit map and they only want to see a map, or maybe they could do a search where they could type in what they're looking for. But those are some of the things we're thinking about there. But I'm going to walk you through real quickly. If you press the food and drink category, the way we envision it is that we'd go to a screen then where you would have a map, you would have the location of where the kiosk is, you would have the listing of all the food and drink businesses. And if you pressed something on the, one of the businesses on the link, you would get a little breadcrumb trail that would show you where it is on the map. And then there would also be an entity listing that details things about that business. So you can't do this with a traditional kiosk. That business you could find, you'd have the name, the address, the phone number, walk time, how long it's going to take you to walk to that business. It'll, you could describe the business, you could put a logo or a photo of the business, you could put, and there's also going to be a QR code. So if, for example, you know, you're at a kiosk that's down in Stowe Park and you press, you've heard about this new business that used to be where supply was, you see it's the lodge, you press the lodge, and you know, you get your breadcrumb trail. If you can't remember, like me, after you go a distance and you can't see it, you can actually scan it with your QR code. So you can take all that information with your phone. So when you get to that turn, you're like, oh yeah, it's right here. I turned down this road. So that's sort of some of the things we're envisioning. Now, there are examples here that our vendor provided us. In the interest of time, I'm going to move past this. It's not exactly like what we're envisioning, but if you want to, for me to go back and cover any of this, I'm happy to. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the location recommendations for the kiosk. There are two locations that we recommend highly. One of them is, the most strongly recommended is at Stowe Park. We think that area by the stairs is ideal. There's plenty of space. It can catch people going up and down Main Street. It'll be ideal for the events that we hold, so that people can click it and see what's coming up next. And you know, just when they want to eat, what's around. It's, it's an area that obviously a lot of people who are visitors sort of congregate at. The next area would be, for our recommendation, would be North Main Street near Belmont Banner. They have nice wide sidewalks. And we feel like with these two locations, we would be able to cover both ends of our historic downtown district. So there are other locations in the downtown district, historic downtown district that we considered, that you may also consider. The Glenway parking lot area, taking into consideration possible future development on that street, such as maybe the Trolley Barn or any kind of extended retail plans. City Hall was also something we considered. And obviously, the River District and Chronicle Districts, you know, I know that there are probably plans for, you know, moving forward with, with improvements to those areas and with development in that area. So I would, you know, our planning would think that in future, in the future, that, that kiosk would also reach to those areas. So this sounds great, I hope, to everyone. Now let's talk a little bit about how we might be able to pay for it. So digital kiosks, as I mentioned, they do have opportunities for revenue to reimburse, maintain, and support. And I've touched on some of these. There's the attract loop that you can actually run paid ads, get paid ads for. And just so you know, those ads have a timing, or that program has a timing schedule that can be under the city's control, very detailed. So this could be something that even small businesses could utilize. If you're a coffee shop and you want to advertise your coffee to, or your, you know, kombucha to the joggers going down the street, you know, between the hours of, you know, 7 and 10, you can just target out, carve out those little areas on specific days to say, yeah, I want to advertise here. So if you're a business that has a small budget, there's still an opportunity to advertise. Or if you're a business that's open all day long and everybody would want to go there, you can advertise all day long too. So it's really, it's really flexible in that way. Also, one thing we've discussed is that in the detail for the businesses that would be there, we could offer some of the services as an enhanced service for a fee. So if we wanted to say, you get, you know, you could put a photo for a small fee, or you could put a reoccurring promotion, or maybe if there was some pertinent details or even a small video, should our final hardware have, have all those speaker options, then, then that would also be something that we could look at doing for a fee. So there are a lot of different things we can do. In the future, as our city grows, should we, this will also, we can evolve and it can meet our needs that way by sponsorship. So if, as we get more hotels, if we find we need a stay category, or as we get, you know, light rail and trolley schedules, we could add a travel category. And we feel at that time, it could be appropriate to go to those relevant entities and say, if you want this included, please help us sponsor this. And then that's just software development and adds on to what we've already got. So we don't have to, you know, to do this all over again. And so, and I haven't even discussed there also the possibility of grants that we're looking to. So real quickly, the elements of the kiosk creation, I'm going to go over this, it looks dull, but this will help explain some of the budgeting things later. There are three different areas and three different entities ultimately. There is the enclosure design, which is the caboose design, and then the installation. And we've been talking to Bizell Design for that. And that is the designer who is responsible for our current downtown wayfinding signage. So it will have a cohesive look for that. The map design, we've been speaking with Good Dharma Design. She is the designer that was responsible for our current shopping and dining map. So we've actually, she's, we've got a leg up in that she doesn't have to start from scratch there. And then the software and hardware company that we've been talking to is Sharp Business Systems of Charlotte. And they're, they've actually are working with an interactive company for the software side of it, but everything is going through Sharp Business Systems. They're, they're would be our vendor. And Dara Hartman, who lives here in Belmont, is their salesperson. And she's been very helpful with getting us very good deals for that. So looking at the hardware real quickly, this kiosk is going to be a 49-inch, it would have a 49-inch monitor. And it would have ambient light sensors, so it automatically adjusts to the brightness conditions. It would be fully sealed. The monitor itself is fully sealed, so you don't get ingress of water, dust, moisture, insects. It is rated with an impact-resistant tempered cover glass, so it protects against vandalism. It's meant to operate in extreme weather conditions and even has color accuracy from the side. And then also the other supporting hardware that you'll see in our budget is that there is an overlay, touch overlay that's recommended for this. Because we have added the enclosure, this will help to make sure that over time, this will still maintain proper alignment. So you won't have any problems of touching here and it not, not going. So this extreme overlay, touch overlay is supposed to help with that and recommended by the hardware people. And the computer itself, and then also an environmentally controlled enclosure for that computer. And all of these things are rated for, you know, outdoor weather and cold and heat. And then for the budget. I was going to turn that over.
You're doing such a great job. And so, yeah, Angela has been putting a lot of effort and time into this project. And when I came on board, it was time-sensitive, knowing that these funds were budgeted through the end of this fiscal year. And so in looking at the cost for the kiosk, obviously, purchasing one kiosk, just one kiosk alone is going to have a greater cost than purchasing a bundle of a second or a third, because there, there are some one-time startup costs with the, with the software. So we can go through this line by line.
You made it bigger.
Make it bigger. Was this in your packet or no?
Just page 136.
Yeah, no. So, and so in this, it was, and the budget that might have been in your packet has probably changed.
Whatever Shelley did earlier.
Bring Shelley back up.
Oh, is it just, oh, okay. Okay. Is that better, Ryan? Okay. So, so Angela talked about the Sharp hardware, the 49-inch high-definition monitor. That cost would remain the same if we purchased one versus three. Content manager license, that would be a yearly annual subscription cost per kiosk, which would be $852. The software, is this the main calendar?
Yeah, one-time cost.
Okay, it is one-time cost. So the software, that is the company developing the guts of the internal systems to match our needs. So that would be a one-time cost.
And that is custom developed. That is not a template. It is custom designed.
Right. And so that is a $7,000 cost. So if we buy one kiosk or three, it's going to cost us the $7,000. Along with that, that does include a two-year warranty on the software. An optional warranty could be purchased for years three, four, and five for, for each of the kiosk. And so those are the numbers strictly for Sharp hardware and software. Angela talked about the caboose design. And that is, for one caboose, that is $13,640. One thing that Buzz did mention is, if we purchased one, then the cost would actually increase by 4,000 versus buying multiple, but you know, getting more use out of the materials. And so that cost is a set cost. Installation, Buzz would be the installer of everything. He, he would be communicating with Sharp. He would get the hardware, software from Sharp, put it in his enclosure, and then he would actually do the installation here in Belmont with the cement running of the electrical. So that's the cost there, this built-in. And that would be a one-time cost. Projected taxes from Buzz. And then as Angela mentioned, we're working with the same designer that did our little map, our little dining and shopping downtown map. So that map would be a similar, so we would have a cohesive look with our kiosk along with our downtown walking map. So that would be the total cost for one kiosk would be the 40,000. Second kiosk would be a total of 71. And then the third would be increased up to 101. Some optional features that we would want to really consider, speaker for sound in developing the kiosk, if we wanted to have a video or welcome by the mayor. As part of this, we would actually need to incorporate the speaker system in with the kiosk. And so that would be a $2,000 Getting into future development, if we had new construction downtown and we had to go back to the designers to alter, you know, the software, or then go back to our designer to add features on that PDF map that's built into the system, that would be additional costs that would incur down the road. And with the software, that would be, we would buy that in like 10-hour increments at $1,000, $1,700. So those are as needed down the road if we need it.
Just to give you an idea of what those costs, you know, might be if we build a whole new retail development, that would obviously be something that hadn't been linked up today.
I appreciate all the efforts you've made on this. A lot, a lot of work involved, sounds like.
What about?
Anybody have any questions at all?
Insurance vandalism.
Yeah, that's what I worry about.
Well, there, there, the hardware, as I mentioned, does, is rated, has like an I-K-10 rating. I don't know what that means. But it does have a rating too, if somebody were to, she said that, she being Dara, has said like in presentations, that, that her hardware person would come in with a hammer and hit the front of it to illustrate that it doesn't break. So I think that the, from the standpoint of someone throwing something at it, I think it's, that's already considered, obviously, if someone spray paints or things like that. Those, those kind of vandalism, I don't know that we can really address.
Have you approached the Belmont Tourism Authority at all for any funding for this project?
Not for this project. In our conversation, when this went before the Main Street DBDA Board, we did, it was asked by Ryan, were we looking at grants? And so, we are looking at grants to offset this cost. The first grant that I was really trying to work on was Caramont Health. They have a grant coming up. And so I was hoping to write a grant through them. You know, I felt like advertisement would be good. But their application was centered around events. And so I couldn't really quite get that drafted the way I wanted. So started looking at other grant possibilities. So one other grant that we received last year was the community, through the Community Foundation for some lights downtown. We received 7,500. And I've communicated with the young lady at the foundation that oversees those grants. The direction that they would like those grants to go is more in arts, artistic design direction, which I feel would fit in really good with the design of the caboose. And so I feel comfortable that, so I'm going to work on a grant through the foundation as well.
Let me ask you, I mean, in lieu of grants, because you've either, you're either awarded them or you're not.
Right.
The businesses that are going to benefit from this, that we're going to be directing them to, have you reached out to the businesses and asked them, can you offset some of this $100,000?
One thing, well, I guess the answer is no. Have I currently had conversations with them as far as the advertising on this? But conversations I am having is that they used to pay into an annual membership of the Merchess Association. And I think it was like $125. And so currently, there is no membership for downtown businesses to buy in and support the Friends of the DBDA. So one thing we are looking at is recreating that package of Friends of the DBDA. And this would be one of the benefits, as an annual dues-paying member, when, when we pull up your site, when Angela talked about getting an extra picture or extra information, as a annual dues-paying member to the DBDA, you would have, that would be an extra perk when it comes to getting more information on the kiosk from your freebie business.
Can I ask you a question? We have $57,000 already in the budget to, to do one of these. Is that correct?
Correct.
The only thing you're asking for us this evening is that you would like for us to consider in the upcoming budget, an additional $15,000. Is that, is that basically what you're requesting?
I think basically what I request is that we would like to eventually have multiple kiosks around downtown. kiosks around downtown, eventually over in the Chronicle District and even the River District as we develop further. So, a request would be to fund at least two, maybe three, depending on, you know, the budget.
Basically, what the manager has asked us to consider is, he advises there's money to cover one, and he's also asking us to consider in the 1920 budget, to consider additional funds to fund additional kiosks.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And the $15,000 number is what, Adrian?
That is. Cover two kiosks.
That is, so if you, so in this year's budget, we have $57,000 set aside in the capital line item for downtown kiosks. So, if you just bought one this year, that's that $46,788. That leaves about $10,200 left over. So, then, the difference between what it would cost for two kiosks and for the second kiosk would be that $10,200 plus that additional $15,000 in next year's budget.
So, you're asking us to give them permission to go ahead and go with two kiosks, and we would pick up the additional funds in next year's budget of about $15,000?
Yes, well, yes, so $71,000 would be the cost for two of them.
Yeah, seven.
Right? I mean, that's what you're asking us to consider.
So, if, so I guess we're asking for two things. One is, do you want to do this? Second, if you want to do this, do we want to go with one or two? We've got one plugged into the budget now, but it's obviously cheaper to get two and do, and given the production time, I would assume this would sort of line up, maybe you get one in June and one in July, something like that, just so the cash flow.
We can install at the same time.
The date's very important for us on the budget.
I'm certainly in favor of us looking at doing two, but who is our representative on travel and tourism now? You are. Okay, so, I think that, certainly, I think we want to support this, but I think both, what we talked about, the concert series and all the things you do there, plus that, is a big part of travel and tourism. So, I think a chunk of money needs to come from that, although if we can't, I mean, if there's some reason that wouldn't happen, I'm in favor of us putting it in the budget, but I think this is appropriate use of the funds.
But then also seeking out additional grants as well.
Mm-hmm.
To offset the costs.
Jim Hoffman works for Stowe Botanical Gardens, and he's on that committee as well. And I think if we could get the rest of the money to get there, I think that'd be good.
I don't know how much is in your budget this year. That's why I don't know.
Well, I think there's some granting restraints that we have.
I mean, there's restraints, but there's also a lot of ass. I'm just, I'm not a pastor, I'm just like, there's not so much money in the house for that, too.
I think typically, though, we did $7,500 grants. So, to me, this is, if you look at 7,500 per, you're looking at $15,000 grant, I think it's an appropriate ask.
I think we should ask everybody for money all the time.
Well, we know there's cash there, though.
Yeah.
Basically, we have a commitment to kiosks because we both fit $7,000.
Yep.
So, we have that commitment. So, what you're saying is we're saving about 10 in that 57. If we put 15 more, whether we can get two, we're better off. So, I make a motion that we approve the manager's recommendation.
I second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Opposed.
Got one opposed, okay. All right, motion carries then.
Can I ask a question, is it, says, are there any other kiosks in this area, just out of curiosity?
Who'd be the first ones?
The City of Gastonia recently installed two, but those two were installed inside two of their buildings, not outside for, really for the general public to use. And so, it's interesting that you ask that, because I look at this as an extra incentive. One thing, as far as the DBDA, really developing a toolkit of really trying to go after and recruit additional businesses to come in to downtown, this is one feather on our cap that we could say, we have electronic kiosks, we will also help promote your business. So, for me, it's a much bigger picture as the extra incentive that this would allow us to actually put forth in, you know, supporting our existing businesses, but also recruiting additional businesses into downtown.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent.
Good night.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, guys.
Well done.
Next item on the agenda is the consideration of approval of a city council candidate filing fee.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, this year is municipal election year, and the Gaston County Board of Elections has sent in a request for us to confirm or revise our candidate filing fee. It is currently $12, and that is to run for city council, and that has been a filing fee in $12 for several cycles. I don't know how long it's been, $12. But before I responded, I wanted to see if it was, I wanted you to set that fee. It's certainly not me.
I'll give a thousand bucks.
Do you need a motion for that?
You know, he's not up for election.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we continue the piece of trust as it sits.
I second that.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I agree with you too, motion.
Okay.
You've got to get that in for Ryan, $1,000.
Yeah, next year, next year.
We'll revise that in two years.
Tells you what cheapskates we are, right?
I don't know what it goes to.
All right, next we have.
It does go to the county.
Board reports. Make it one thought.
Thank you. So, the next items, we've got committee minutes, we've got the Environmental Sustainability Board report for their minutes from their February 13th meeting. And then, the Main Street Advisory Board and DBDA report for the minutes of their February 21st meeting. Then, you've got the Parks and Rec Citizen Advisory Board report, that's the minutes of their meeting of January the 16th. Excuse me, that's not January 16th, it's February 20th meeting, excuse me. The next set of minutes is from the Planning and Zoning Board, that's the minutes of their February 21st meeting. The Public Safety Committee report is the minutes from the Public Safety Committee meeting on February 8th, the 7th. The Water and Sewer Committee report is the minutes from the Water and Sewer Committee meeting of February 8th, the 7th also. None of those require any action, that's just for your information.
Well, I'd like to make one comment on the Public Safety meeting, if you'll mind. What's not reflected in the report here is what I stated at the opening of the meeting. And while I did raise the question of the downtown officer versus the need for him here versus maybe in a high-crime area, I did state that I had talked with Chad at the retreat Saturday morning, after our Friday night conversation. And we had a good conversation, and, you know, I was resolved to accept that he was right in what he was doing, and that I didn't, I said, I'll be honest with you, I didn't know we were having a meeting. I thought the chief and I had settled this. So, you know, that part of it, if the minutes or the report are to reflect the tenor of the meetings and the minutes, which I think is laid out by statute, I would like to see that put in this report. Can we do that?
These are the minutes of the Public Safety Committee. So, I would defer to the Public Safety Committee members, and they could adopt minutes at their next meeting.
Okay.
And if you want to make changes to them, I would recommend that you send the city board what you want added to that.
Well, I mean, you should probably just take it, you recorded it, right? Okay, I mean, you should be able to get verbatim what I said off the recording.
So, minutes per session are not required to be verbatim, they're just required to...
No, no, that's why I said they're supposed to reflect the flavor of the meeting, not the exact.
They're actually only supposed to reflect actions that were taken during the meeting. So, that's, I'm just giving you a background of what I do. So, if you guys choose that you want additional information added.
I think Adrian's response to that question at the retreat was, let's just have a meeting and talk about it.
Right.
I don't think he was responding directly to Councilman Turner in a sense. Councilman Turner raised the question, and you said, well, let's just have a meeting.
I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying.
No, I think what you're saying is you feel like that you called a meeting, and Adrian really did.
Well, based on what we discussed at the Friday evening session at the retreat, we then went at the February 4th city council meeting under the manager's report, and said we had the request from the retreat to hold a Public Safety Committee meeting, and Adrian scheduled that.
Okay, that's fine. I'll go ahead and cede that point. I guess the overall point is, is what I, in these minutes, what I would like to have reflected is what I said about it, what I said to Chad, in that I didn't have a problem with it when we had the meeting, that we had resolved it. I mean, that's, and I will go to Public Safety and make that request formally from them. That's fine.
So, at their next meeting, we'll have approval of these minutes from their February 7th meeting for consideration at the next Public Safety Committee meeting, and then if you'll just provide what you'd like to add.
Okay. I think that would be good. I think I recorded it as well, so we'll just go from there.
Okay. Any other questions about the committee reports? Manager's report, which is found on page 169. A couple of upcoming events, on April 6th, the city will have its annual Arbor Day celebration and partner with Keep Belmont Beautiful for City Pride Day. Those events will both be event along the Riverfront Park. Also, I've included our 2019 schedule of events, so it's got all events for the year. And then, a couple of transportation-related updates that we've talked about in several manager's reports in the last year. As you know by now, the Metropolitan Transit Commission did approve the Link's Silver Line Light Rail to come into Belmont. There's, that was the first step, was adopting that alignment, and I appreciate the mayor and Martha and Richard going to Charlotte for that meeting. It was, it was that whole project of the CATS plan update in the Silver Line from Belmont to the airport, to Uptown, to Matthews, was very well received by that board. And Mayor Lyles was not, had the meeting, but she fumed in, and she talked about what a step four this is for the region, and she focused on regionalism, so that was really good. So, we will continue working with CATS on that very important project. Related to that, we still continue to work with the NPO and Gaston County and Mecklenburg County and NC DOT on the Sloane Ferry Bridge replacement on Wilkson Boulevard over the Catawba River, particularly with the betterments. DOT does seem to agree to include not only the six-lane vehicular bridge with its bike ped components, but also a light rail bridge that would be a separate bridge, but they will do the planning for both and the environmental work for both, which will save cost and time for the light rail project. So, we will, we're working on some betterments for that to make it an attractive signature gateway bridge, and we'll bring that to you hopefully in April. DOT needs to get to work on that. And then, we have two intersection projects for Wilkson Boulevard, one that we've had public meetings on at North Main Street, and that was the recommendation from NC DOT to do a Michigan left, where you would not be able to make left turns at that intersection. Based on feedback from us, NC DOT is now willing to sort of drop back a little bit on that project and consider, instead of having that as, considered as a standalone intersection improvement project, and then you have the separate improvement of North Main Street project tied into the interstate widening, to look at it all as one large project and to, basically to increase the scope of the interstate project to include this intersection and look at that holistically and not individually. We don't know if there would be any change in what their recommended design, but at least we'll be looking at it big picture. And that would, that would, you know, we'd push back that project for a couple of years because it would be tied to the interstate widening project, but the traffic signals will be upgraded by then, so hopefully, traffic will flow better through the intersection. But if the council is in favor of that, we can let DOT know that we would recommend that they include that intersection in the scope of the interstate widening project. We'd probably just do that at the NPO meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be the appropriate time. And I just, are we losing any funding on that? Because I know we talked to Randy about that. Is that money going to go back into our pool, or are we still going to retain that money?
It would be added to that project, to the interstate widening project. So, any concerns about doing that? The second is, a little bit further east on Wilkinson at the intersection of Park Street. DOT has also funded intersection improvements at that intersection. They have not done the work, but they really like these Michigan lefts, and there's a good chance that we'll get a Michigan left at that intersection as well. So, we've reiterated our concern about that design. So, they are also now looking, the NPO is looking at an alternative of maybe having a grade separation of Park Street and Wilkinson, where Park Street would go, basically have an overpass over Wilkinson Boulevard. They're currently looking at this at Cox Road and Franklin in Gastonia, so that both streets have free-flowing traffic.
Man, I thought the light rail was far-fetched.
So, they are looking at this and would like to score that with spot 6.0, which is coming up next year.
Because of the natural grade, it's not as problematic as you would think.
Yeah. And since Park Street goes down and then back up, it's possible.
That's awesome.
I'm not an engineer, so I can't, it sort of blows my mind.
Yeah.
But they're looking at that.
Wow.
And so, NC DOT would like for us to, if you're in favor of at least exploring that possibility, we can ask the NPO and NC DOT to explore that.
Interesting.
Okay. So, that's all about transportation updates. We do have a couple of meetings that we need to have. We're gearing up for the meet of the year. The Water and Sewer Committee, which is Mayor Martin, Councilman Folk, and Councilman Gad need to meet for some updates on a couple of projects that you already have been talking about. I would recommend that we add that to the front end of one of the workshops I'm about to ask for. We need to have two workshops. I'd like to have them both in March if possible. One was to follow-up information that we talked about from the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee that we discussed at the planning retreat, and then also this commercial property maintenance code that I mentioned, I think lasts the council meeting. If we could get that scheduled for either next week or the following week, that would be good. And then, we would need to have our first budget workshop, preferably the last week of March. So, if you want to look at your calendars now, or if we want to send some of those dates out to you.
I can do March 11th, which is next Monday.
Next Monday? We could do a Water and Sewer Committee at 4:30 and then the workshop at 5:00.
I can do that.
Monday, the 11th?
Yes, or next Monday. Does that work for the rest of?
Water and Sewer at 4:00?
I'll have to do it.
Water and Sewer at, we'll say, we'll say 4:15.
4:15. Okay.
And the workshop is at?
And then, budget workshop, if possible, we'd like to have that the last week of March, the week at the 25th or the 29th. And the 28th does not work for the mayor and me. So, the 25th, 26th, or 27th?
I can do the 25th.
Just keep them on a Monday?
Works well.
I can, I can do the 25th. The only thing, I may end up having to do some travel with my job for weeks at a time, so I don't know when that may start, or, but, so, right now, that's a possible tentative week I'd be going, but, but I'd say let's book it.
I may be going to Jacksonville, but.
Book it down.
I don't know. It's not certain that that was in the area, but let's go ahead and book it.
I need you to check with Frankie.
You just got bags, so.
That's spring break for me.
Okay, what time was that?
Push it, it better be Monday rather than the end of the week. I'll be gone at the end for sure.
What time would you like?
You'd do 5:00 PM?
5:00 is fine with me.
5 on the 25th.
5 on the 25th, and if your travel plans.
Soon as I know.
Because I'd like for everybody to be there.
Yeah.
We can always push that into the first week of April.
25th, and that's here at city hall.
We'll do that at city hall.
All right.
Unfortunately, once I start, it could be every week.
And then, I don't have this on my report, but I did get an email from Gaston County Schools today. They want to hold a groundbreaking ceremony for the new middle school on Monday, March 25th at 4:00 PM. So, we can meet down at the site of the new school at 4:00 and then come back here for our workshop.
All right, right after that, okay.
So, they will be sending invitations to you for that groundbreaking.
Take you longer to drive?
It'll be easy to dig up the dirt.
It will, it's nice and soft. Wear your mud boots.
You haven't been to that groundbreaking, have you?
That's at four P M.
So just photo op.
Yeah, the shovel actually doesn't go in the dirt.
That's all that I have for the manager's report.
All right, any, I know we have a closed session, but any other business that we may have that Ryan, what's going with you?
Well, first, I'm glad that we funded the concert series, I think we'd have a big issue if the city decided that we weren't going to put the concerts on anymore. So I think, I think that's real positive, Christmas Village, too. Also, I think these kiosks and, you know, the paver brick and the facade grant, I mean, I think they're all really challenging issues to bet on, but it's working, and when we look at the numbers coming back from the Main Street Department, the amount of money that we're putting into our downtown, and the amount of money that the businesses are putting into downtown are just night and day. I mean, we're getting a huge return on our investment, the downtown district's our largest employer by far, it's our largest tax base, and so I think we're real fortunate, and it's tough to see the direct reflection on the different projects, but I think we've got to continue to make bold decisions to keep downtown moving forward, and if that's a TV kiosk, and we're the first in the county, or the first in western North Carolina to do it, maybe we're setting the standard, and so I hope that we can continue to have a vision for what we want this downtown to be like, and so I'm excited about where we're headed. I just want to keep a reminder of the economic development piece of the downtown area, it's just the largest employer that we have by far, we couldn't recruit a business like our downtown.
Has anybody been to the lodge yet?
I have.
Have you been out and puttin' cheesecake?
That is good. That's all for me.
That's good.
Richard? Yeah, no, actually, to build on what Ryan just said, I don't disagree with most of what he said, but what I would encourage is that we do take a serious look at a municipal service district to fund some of these things that you might consider above and beyond traditional city services, and not be so reliant on the general fund, which is our tax base. I mean, I would strongly encourage you all to look at that, and that's key to my opposition to some of these things, is that I'd like to see you be a little more self-sufficient in your funding. That's all I have.
Nothing for you?
Two things for me. Two years ago, when we went to Charlotte to speak to their planning organization group, you heard me say how embarrassed I was that the people were so rude. This time, two years later, some of those same people are not the elected officials, they were so much more pleasant and cooperative, it was amazing, so it was nice to be there this time. The only other thing, please remind them about the stoplight, Adrian, at Harris Teeter, because it's still backing up South Point traffic in a major way, both morning and afternoon.
Thank you, I'll follow back up with DOT.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Go for it.
Then we have a closed session for attorney consultation.